And they're wonderful folks, the two-year-old daughter. They're really very, very nice people. He is very successful. He goes, goes something about he's a, does all the graduate school testing exams stuff. By employees. You go to graduate school, you pass their tests, you sign up with these guys, they help you. And they're kind of worldwide. Very, very nice. The only people I've ever met that write those papers. How do you do? They've been doing it for a while. And it's so, there's so much. Yeah. Well, then you have to, as a company, you have to be responsible. You gotta help people pass. But they do very well. They're originally from South Carolina. And they're only going to be here this last year. The house they were in. So we're great.
Fortunately, we're going to be 20 miles away. We'll be around. We'll be around. Everything here now is going to run into the sun. These are instructed.
Were you ready? Couple minutes, okay.
I'm just making sure to find out. Nobody's in the room. Good.
Yeah.
We're doing what people have wanted.
Yeah.
Same thing as here.
Yeah.
I think that's more than it is.
Yeah.
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 Sorry, just really, I'm not being.
What I was saying, just really, I think it's probably a reason for us to.
Okay, very good. Are we all set in the back room, too?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Good evening, everybody. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the Santa Helena City Council for June 9, 2015. Councilmember Kroll is participating by phone. Vice Mayor White, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Kroll.
Here.
Yay.
Doring.
Here.
Pitts.
Here.
All right. The next item on our agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on matters that are not, underscore the word "not," on our agenda this evening. Comment is limited to three minutes. Does anybody wish to address us at public forum? And if you would state your name, that would be good.
Hi, my name is Scott Decker.
Okay.
And you can start the three minutes. I'm getting pretty good at this. You guys always cut me off, but anyways, it is what it is. Hey, I was, the first time, I was just wondering about minutes when I came in. I noticed that, I came into the office, I don't know, three weeks ago, and I believe I spoke with Cindy over here, in fact, I know I did, and she said to go online, and it would be online. Well, online, it was six months behind. I brought it to her attention, and it was the wrong thing to do. Maybe I should talk to somebody else, but all I want to do is view the minutes, that's all. And that's all I wanted. And I think that shouldn't, and if it's that hard, then it makes me feel like, you know, something's, I don't know, it's easy. You got a couple retirement homes that, if they do volunteer work for the minutes or what, I don't know how busy you guys are, but this is nothing. Santa Helena, what, 5,500 people? That's a little fart compared to what I'm used to. I'm used to living in Arizona, and I was on a board of homeowners association, and the only reason why I got on there, because a lady lost her husband, and they were going to take her home away because she was behind one month on her, on her homeowners association, so I decided to get involved. And I got a big heart, just like everybody else, you know, but I know that everybody, you know, works, and I don't want to be a pain in anybody's butt. All I want to do is view the minutes, and I feel like that, the last couple of times, I don't know, this Brown Act or whatever, I, I think you guys really just stepped all over me, and I apologize about that. I don't know what other way to say it, but God, all I wanted to do was view the minutes, and I'm embarrassed being up here anymore. God, I feel bad about even cruising through town anymore. You know, my car broke down in, in Calistoga, they arrested me, saying all this, this crazy stuff, and AAA, you know, I'm calling AAA over here in Santa Helena, they're, do you guys not like AAA or something? I don't know what the heck is going on. I moved away 30 years ago, and I come back, and this place has completely changed, man. I'm kind of embarrassed that I live in Santa Helena anymore. So I, I don't know what else to say, you know, except I'd be ashamed if I was up there. You know, especially, not, not, not these people here, but Mayor, especially Jennifer and Thomas and Cindy, you guys.
Let's try and stay to issues and not personalize things, please.
What's that?
Let's stay to your issues and not try to personalize things.
Okay, well, that's, that's my issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One, one last thing. Jennifer, what is the State of California rock? What is the rock? The State of California rock?
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Oh, one, one other thing. The, the very first time I asked about, or second time about a vegan winery or vegan wines, nobody got back to me. I still got five seconds left. See, you guys are trying to kick me off. Forget it. Later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to respond just briefly on the minutes, please?
I'd be happy to. We apologize. Actually, it's very interesting, and regardless of the size of the city, and we actually have fairly large agendas in Santa Helena, and so the size of the city doesn't really impact the amount of work that it takes to put the minutes together. And the official record of any council meeting in Santa Helena is the video. We are behind in our minutes, we're working on that. We've, if you've noticed on the last couple of agendas, we've had some bunches come forward. We're continuing to work on that, and we hope to be caught up in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak at public forum? Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Norma Ferris, and I'm speaking here as an individual, not representing anybody. I just wanted to, to say that we had, as you all know, an exceptionally well-run library led by Jennifer Baker, and you know that because I stated two letters to each of you, and I also put a note to the editor in the Star. But I want to urge us, you, and us as a community, to be careful about, carefully watching how decisions about layoffs or hiring are done and are communicated to all of us. Even though I respect that those are managerial decisions, and that's how it should be, I will, I will want to urge just to all have transparency. Yesterday, I attended a meeting looking for ways to support the achievement of a balanced budget for two hours, where, where different people were really looking for ways to support that balanced budget. And then, four hours later, I received a message that probably should have not received, but I received it, that informing that Jennifer Baker was, was laid off. So I was very surprised that even the decision was made in four hours, that, 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 or that the decision has been made before, and we were in a meeting with 15 people trying to figure out ways for, for, to achieving a balanced budget without affecting that position. And we were not informed about that, and we just felt, I, I felt that all that time was kind of like, okay, why did I spend it? So I just want us to, I try just to be watchful about how decisions, managerial decisions are made.
Thank you very much. Do you want to respond very briefly?
Thank you.
No, okay. Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, my name is Lowell Smith. Nelson Mandela once was asked about leadership, and he said, "The challenge of leadership is to add light, not heat, when difficult decisions become necessary." And Lord knows, we've got some difficult decisions in Santa Helena. We all appreciate that. But similarly, firing our library director at this critical time does not add light to our challenges. It certainly doesn't. And I am not only dismayed, depressed, but the, the evolution of the process of trying to solve particular library and the city's financial challenges needs broad-based community support. And the cities, the citizens of Santa Helena through the library have expressed for the last 30 years, broad, broad support for the library, and they will continue to do so. But when we do things like this, it makes us wonder, what are the dynamics of trying to find a joint solution to our many, many problems right now? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Smith. Anybody else at public comment? All right, I'll close the public comment, and that takes us to the consent items. Now, with respect to the consent items, any member of the council or any member of the public can request that the item be removed from consent, in which case it will go through the normal.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt.
What have you?
We, we have one item on the agenda first.
I skipped reports by staff and city council. Apologize. Let's go to reports by staff.
None for me, thank you.
City Attorney?
Nothing.
Ms. Mitz?
I actually do.
Okay.
I just wanted to invite the council to please share with the community that I have started another recruitment for boards, commissions, and committees. So it's going to be in the Star on Thursday and also in the Register. We are going to also engage, community engagement, and just try to really get out to all the citizens and service groups and try to drum up some service. I've also put flyers in the back of the room and also applications, and I invite the community to participate.
Good. Thank you very much. Mr. Palmer?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I actually have two items. First of all, I did get notice today from PG&E that they're going to be doing some more remediation work at their site there at Mitchell Drive, behind the bank. They've got some wells they're going to monitor and install. And then, secondly, I invited the Water Conservation Coordinator, Jennifer Tool, here to give us a quick update on where we're at with the water drought regulations and updated conservation efforts.
Well, welcome, Ms.
Thank you.
Very pleased to see you here.
Thank you. I just wanted to introduce myself to the council and the community. My name is Jennifer Tool. I am the new Water Conservation Specialist. I just wanted to quickly recap the current water restrictions. They went into effect April 29th, and those include their, no outdoor watering within 48 hours of rain, irrigation for landscaping is limited to two days per week, drinking water should only be served at restaurants upon request, and to promote water conservation, hotels must give patrons the option to not have their towels and linens laundered every day. In addition to that, when irrigating, we're asking all residents to limit the irrigation to only permeable surfaces, so water shouldn't go out onto pavement or driveways and areas like that. And if you're washing a car, it's required to use a shut-off nozzle on the hose, and water cannot be used to clean driveways or sidewalks, and fountains should only be used if they have a recirculating system. So those are our current water regulations, and some of the upcoming restrictions that we're looking at, including in the ordinance, are limiting the hours of irrigation to not have irrigation during the heat of the day, and creating set days for irrigation. There's been a lot of confusion about what days people can water, and so that's what we're going to look to clarify. And in the two weeks that I've been here, I've already reached out to the school district and the city of Calistoga and the city of Napa. I'm very interested in creating partnerships and utilizing as many resources as we can by creating partnerships. So some of the things that I'm hoping to do in the coming months is do a rain barrel workshop. I know Napa had one, and I'm looking to partner with Calistoga and host one either here or in Calistoga. We're going to be offering, offering free aerators for both bathroom and kitchen sinks, toilet leak tabs, and showerheads. Those will be free to the community, and I'm looking at ways to support local businesses to help conform with the current regulations, and then also create a more robust website with frequently asked questions. So for more information, you can just go to the city's homepage and click on the little drippy water faucet, and there's new information up there, and that also has my contact information.
Okay, terrific. Again, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, and the Planning Director?
Nothing at this time.
Members of the council?
I have no, no comments.
Ms. White? Ms. Kroll?
No, I have nothing to report, thank you.
I have just a brief statement about Jennifer Baker. Our community appreciates her years of dedicated service to the city of Santa Helena and wishes her the very best for the future. Thank you. Staff briefing. That takes us to, Ms. Martinez? There you are, way to the back.
Thank you, Mayor Goldberg. So I will, I will start, it's just with the intro, intro until I get the PowerPoint up. So, good evening, members of the city council, city staff, and residents of Santa Helena. This is, yeah, thank you. This is a report for the second community survey conducted by the CDU Santa Helena Community Engagement Program. I will refer to it as CE Program as well. And before I move on to the report, I would like to make a brief recap about the first community survey conducted back in January of this year. Our first community survey was about budget priorities, and residents had the opportunity to rank budget priorities submitted by heads of most of the city departments, not including the police department, which had their own separate community priority survey during the month of November 2014. The results of this surveys have helped the city manager and city council during the decision process of budget development for the fiscal year 2015, 2016, and the results can be found in the city's website, where exactly some of the residents have asked me, and with that, I have great news. We have, in order to make it easier for residents to have, to find information and projects of the program, of the CE Program, we have created a separate CE Program page inside the city's website, and it's actually in the upper part, in the upper bar, under the tab, "Our Community." I wanted to show it too, but I didn't have internet. So you go to the homepage, and you'll see it in the upper part bar. So the purpose of this second survey, I have already uploaded the survey results on the, on our new CD E Program website. So as I speak, our residents are able to see the results online, which include a more thorough and comprehensive report that shows and discusses the graphics and more detailed information of each of the questions in the survey. This presentation will only focus on the takeaways of the report, if not, it'll be presented for two hours.
Okay.
So the purpose of this community, communication survey was and is to learn more about the residents' communication preferences. We will also be using this information to develop and a city communication plan, which will help us be more strategic in the approach of how we can communicate with our residents and how the residents can communicate with us. The description of the survey. The communication survey was available in both English and Spanish, using the US Census as a reference, stating that the most spoken languages in our city are those. The last survey was available only online, but this time, we included and made it available also in print for those who don't have access to the internet or email, or had not yet subscribed to the CD E News. It lasted one month, and we got 302 responses in total. 271 in English, 31 in, in Spanish. 175 of those English surveys entries were online, and the remaining 96 entries were in print. From the 31 responses in the Spanish survey, 20 of them were online, and the remaining 11 were in print. Respondents were able to select more than one option in more, in most of the questions, except the demographic question about age, because you can only be one age, of course. So the online survey, where we posted the survey and where we announced it, we sent it out through different channels, including the CD, the city E News, the library E News Letter, social media, including Twitter and Facebook. The city does not have a Twitter account, so we use the library's Twitter page to spread the news. And it does have a, the city does have a Facebook page that was created prior, the creation of the CE Program, and it's been used currently for public notice, and now we use it for community, community engagement outreach. And we've been getting a lot of likes lately. Cool. We posted the survey also on the city's website, in the homepage, community news, the library's homepage, and the city and Santa Helena Star Online Community News. The print survey. This version of the survey was distributed as a water bill insert, along with drop boxes that were located in strategic locations, meaning convenient places for residents to drop off their completed surveys or fill out new surveys. To reach out to more people that might not receive the water bill, or seen the online news, or not have social media, or not visited the different locations where we had the drop boxes, we went out to the streets and provided and collected surveys in person. We tried to be everywhere, and with the help and support of local media channels, we were able to send out public service announcements and post flyers on the public TV channel, public radio, and around town. And when I say public radio, this was a KBBF bilingual radio station. So now, the questions. We started, the first question asked the residents if they had access to internet or email. In summary, from both versions of the survey, in English and Spanish, 270 responses said to have internet at home, have access to internet at home. 174 said to have access via mobile devices. 120 said to have access at work, 11 at the library through the public computers, and six said that they didn't have access to internet or email at all. So the second question, we later asked residents to select a type of information they were interested in. Again, people had the opportunity to choose more than one options as they wanted. From the 12 types of information we included in the survey, we picked, we picked the top five for each version of the survey. When I say version, I say the English or the Spanish. In the English, the top five information in order of preference were breaking news, community crime alerts, community events, city council updates and changes and updates in law, in local laws. In the Spanish version, the top preferred five information were, again, in order of preference, library events, housing information, community events, safety, emergency preparedness information, city volunteer, and employment opportunities. In the third question, residents were able to mark the usefulness of current communication methods being used by the library. In the English version, chosen as the most useful methods were articles in the local newspaper, the Santa Helena Star, updates by the city of Santa Helena in the E News, and the library E News. The water bill inserts and the city website were chosen as useful. Residents that took the survey through city thought that city flyers around town and public notice boards were not that useful. There were some methods selected as do not use that could mean people don't know that these communication options exist, for example, the Facebook. Seeing that the CD E News was selected among the most useful methods of communication, we have to point out that in the last question of the survey, residents were, residents that not, that do not receive the CD E News yet, were able to share their emails in order to be added to the email list, and we got 90 emails. So I make sure that I uploaded all these emails as new entries, and those residents will begin to receive E News on their emails from now on. In, the results in the Spanish version were kind of a little bit different, and that's why we wanted to point it out. Most useful, again, were selected, the articles in the Star, in order, CD E News, library news, but the methods marked as not useful at all in the English version were included as most useful here. The flyers around town and public notice boards. The selected useful methods were, again, the city's website, water bills, but this time, we see methods such as the Channel 27 and the city's Facebook as being useful. So we see, again, how diverse our community, our, our community is in their preference of communication. And again, the do not use option might also be that the survey participants didn't know those communication options existed, or exist. It was interesting, there was less selection of the option not useful in comparison with the amount of people that shows the same option in the English version. That low percentage was to people that marked the Facebook as not being useful at all, but then, from the 26 responses, 15 said that it was very useful. then, from the 26 responses, 15 said that it was very useful. So they're very different, and we have to think about having a little bit of everything in communications methods. So, in the, in the fourth question, residents were able to choose the preferred survey distribution channels. In the English version, in order of popularity, was internet-based surveys, followed by mail-delivered, the print surveys, along with drop boxes, and the least favorite, print surveys available in high-traffic locations. While in the Spanish version, the participants, in order of preference, said that it was, their favorite was to have the print surveys along with drop boxes, followed by internet-based survey, mail-delivered surveys, and the least preferred, again, were surveys in print available in high-traffic locations. And we found out that the drop boxes were hit, so if you saw the drop box, there was a hit. Okay, so the fifth question asked residents to choose and suggest activities that will increase their level of participation. Very important. In the English version, in order, again, of preference, 100 people stated that they were satisfied with their level of engagement, followed closely by town hall meetings. In third place, small community discussions. In fourth place, social media. And the least favorite were study sessions. While in the Spanish version, again, in order of preference, the top was social media. And it was followed by statements of feeling satisfied with their level of engagement. The third, small community discussions. And again, study sessions. And the least favorite was town hall meetings. Survey participants had the opportunity to share comments about other activities they think will increase their engagement with the community and the local government. And I will share some of those comments with you. Actually, all the comments were here, and these are the takeaways of all of these ideas shared by the participants. Some suggested a city's Twitter page for urgent news, public safety alerts, and community events. City's website improvements, like a city-community calendar and updated information, such as minutes, and more accessible links to city meeting recordings. Creating a community email site where residents can express needs, share ideas and suggestions or concerns. And exploring online engagement system, similar to what Yountville, the town of Yountville has, Example Next Door and Speak Up. Again, I copy pasted many of this. Hold a column of the, at the star, where the city manager and the mayor can communicate with residents. In addition to sending news and updates to the Star, residents showed interest in sending, in seeing, meeting agendas in the newspaper as well, if possible. Post city news in the Star, a minimum of two weeks before events, if possible, again. More community and library events and celebrations. I like that one, so I had a happy face right there. Regular short surveys on key issues, very important. Show, have more short community meetings and forums after work hours, if possible. And possibly creating a neighborhood engagement group or council. I had to add that we had begun to work on some of these suggestions, such as updating the website, as Jennifer Phillips mentioned, with the minutes, and communicating closer with the San Helena Star. Many residents have commented very positively, positively, actually, in the survey about the mayor's Memorial Day editorial, so kudos, mayor. Okay, so now, these are the takeaways of the optional demographic questions. The reason we had added these questions in our surveys, in the first and now in the second, is because the San Helena community has become highly diverse. And we want to know who's participating in our surveys and engaging in the community in general. This helps us know what are the gaps in communication efforts, and provide us with direction in where to improve. The demographic questions included age, ethnicity, spoken languages at home. These categories are exactly the same categories used by the US Census, and help us better compare our results. So the majority of people that took, that responded to this question in the English version of the survey were between the ages of 46 to 84, while the majority of people that answered this question in the Spanish version were between the ages of 19 and 45. Trouble. And, okay, here we go. In this option, people had the opportunity to choose which ethnicity they felt identified with. And I'm going to mix both versions of the survey. So 200, 210 participants said to be white, non-Hispanic, 47 said to be Hispanics, three said to be Asian, non-Hispanics, one said to be black, non-Hispanic, and the remaining 10, the answer to this question, were classified as other ethnicities in the US Census. On the option about spoken languages at home, the top languages were, as the US Census, English and Spanish. And the remaining 12 participants that answered this question marked the other languages. So in the last question, we asked residents, participants, to share additional information related to the topic of the survey. And this were some of the takeaways of all of the comments, and I'm going to read them. Some recommended to use more the utility bill inserts as a communication method. A need for more information about water use and conservation, we just did that. More information, records, and updates available to the public through the city's website. More mayor letters to the editor. Community.
I think I write enough as is.
Community meeting agendas to be published in the San Helena Star, if possible. Find ways to communicate with residents outside of city lines, which, with those that do not have access to internet or receive water bills. Hold community meetings outside of normal working hours, if possible. More community open discussions with commissioners and council members. These are fantastic recommendations, and we are already evaluating them. And a couple of them are actually in process of action. And to wrap up, we want to send a special thank you to all the residents that participated in this community survey, and to all the local agencies and businesses that hosted our survey drop boxes. So what's next? The CE Program will be working with the city manager in developing a community communications plan, and have other projects in planning process, so stay tuned. Remember to sign up to receive the CD E News on the city's website, www.cityofsantahelena.org, or Google it. Any questions about the survey, or questions about the program, suggestions? I can be reached at mari, M-A-R-I, at shpl.org, as you see in the screen, and I have copies of the presentation there. And my phone number is 707-963-5244, extension 118, and I still have to read it, because I don't call myself. Any questions from the city council? Okay, well, thank you, everyone, and we'll be back soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. All right, this gets us to the consent items. And again, as I think I was explaining, I'm going to read them, and then any member of the public, or any member of the council, can pull a consent item, and we'll go through the normal process. So, number seven is, consideration of proposed approval of a resolution renewing the Fire Emergency Dispatch Services Agreement with Cal Fire for a period of July 1st, 2015 through June 30, 2018, in the amount of $104,300. Eight, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving a contract in the amount of $40,000 with Zambelli Fireworks for a city-sponsored fireworks show located at Crane Park on July 4, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions that I'd need to have answered, so I'd like to have that one pulled. Thank you.
Nine, consideration of a letter of support for nominating Shari and Garen Staglin for the Presidential Medal of Freedom. All right, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve consent items seven and nine.
So moved, sorry.
In second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us to item eight. And I think the staff person on that was, was Arias, is she here? Heidi?
Do you want to say a few words? I just can go right into a few just minor questions that I had. One of them may be for the attorney, I'm not quite sure. Under the contract, well, first of all, we're obligated, the city's obligating itself to pay the vendor $40,000, $45,000? And a question I had was, under our contract, maybe this is best for Tom, what happens if we, we are not able to raise that amount of money? Are we still on the hook, under the agreement? Or do we have a right to terminate and suspend the contract? I'm hoping that we'll be able to raise that money, and maybe there's good news, maybe we're getting close to that, but I was concerned about that from a legal point of view. If we don't raise the money, or we, you know, it appears that we'd still be obligated, or we'd have to make a decision to terminate.
Yes, as of today, we have a little bit over $22,000 in the GoFund, so we are way ahead from last year. And I'm pretty confident that we're going to get the full $40,000.
Okay, Tom, do you have, is there?
Well, we discussed this at a staff level, because that's exactly what happens, is with the fireworks companies, you can't just cancel at the very last minute. And so we've now made an obligation, if the council approves this contract, it's an obligation of the city to cover the entire amount. At a staff level, we have every reason to believe that we're going to reach the fundraising level, but it does bind the city to that payment if, for any reason, the funds weren't collected from the community.
It's a GoFundMe site?
So right now, it's $22,000, that's just money from the GoFundMe. It does not include some of the wineries or restaurants, so we don't know that right now.
But for those that aren't familiar, out there in the audience, on how to do this...
Let's do the PR right now. $22,000 more.
Can I call my commissioner, Kim Feeney? She's a park re-commissioner, she's kind of the head on this GoFundMe.
Great.
Hi, thank you for having me. It's a wonderful opportunity to be here, because right now, only 90 San Helena residents have donated, out of thousands. And who doesn't like fireworks? Besides kids, adults love them. So we are pressing the pavement, my family, many families that are involved, hitting all the businesses, homes. If you live on the east side, you got a flyer on your doorstep yesterday. It was a little hot, my children are in the back, they're tired. This week, we're going to hit the west side. Many businesses are willing to step up and give a lot of money once the community is involved, and I personally guarantee, if we don't reach 45, I'll cover the difference.
Thank you. Okay, I'm feeling better. What's the website to donate?
The website is gofundme.com. Gofundme.com.
Forward slash S-T-H fireworks.
Cool.
Yes, and an email blast will go to the whole community using our recreation site tomorrow morning. And just to recur, we are all set, also with a security team to assist us at the event. Park staff is already prepping for the day event in the prep area, as well as with the police department and the fire department. So we have already started working on getting the park secured, already planned out, mapped out. And so when, you know, finalize those things, it would be all out to the community, kind of designating areas where we can view it and a fun safe.
Thank you. The second question I had, had to do with a map, and the area, on this map, there's circles drawn about an area that no one can kind of enter into during the, during the fireworks.
Yeah, so the red one is...
And let me finish. It appears that there might be some private property at issue there, and I'm concerned, when you circle property that's private, that you, I would assume that we're going to have the consent of those folks, or at least some kind of notice, that their private property is being excluded, I guess, from themselves? I don't know how that all works, and if we have to give some kind of a notice there? I'm just looking at the circle, and it's broadly drawn.
Yeah, we have one driveway, and that would be noticed. We've already started conversations.
Okay, how's that? Oh, personal conversations?
Yeah.
All is good there?
Yeah.
As far as, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that nobody was surprised that they couldn't get onto their own property.
No.
Okay.
There's no blocked off property. The only property coming, closing down is Crane Park. The Little League Field, East League, Little Field, all the way down to the park are the designated closed-down areas.
I think Councilmember Doring's question related to that area in the broader circle, which seems to be a fallout zone, and there seems to be some private property, and there seems to be some shed perhaps, and it's also pretty close to a house there. And so I guess the issue is, is can we exclude, we can't exclude the property owner from its own property, I would think.
No.
But hopefully, they consent, and there's a fire truck there, and everything's okay. Is that where we are?
Yes.
All right. That's fine with me.
Unless there's other questions, I'm ready to move approval of the item.
Well, do I need to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
I think I need to open the public hearing. Is there any further comment at public hearing? No, seeing none? Very good.
I will move approval of this item. Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. All right.
Thank you, Heidi.
We're now down to, now down to new business. Item 10, discuss and provide direction on the presented reductions in the San Helena proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. The staff person on that is the city manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On May 11th, we were here before you, and we presented you with information that indicated we needed to basically come up with a million dollars in our general fund to present a balanced budget by the end of June. Each department made presentations, and those departments that were able to presented service options for council's consideration and direction, to see if it was something you were interested in us pursuing for additional reductions. And there were also a few revenue options that I included in that presentation, and some that council said they'd like to have some more information on. So we're here today to present you with that information. So I'm going to go over a brief review of the budget. I'm going to talk about the budget balancing proposal, and it has expenditure reductions in it that basically gets us balanced, and then any additional revenue enhancements in the short term that the city council would like us to pursue in the year ahead. So first off, after that meeting, we went back, we took a look at 1415, because any monies that we don't expend in 1415 become available for the 1516 budget. And so I have to really give compliments to the exec staff team. This is very difficult for staff, all staff, to go through when we start talking about service reductions, when we start talking about jobs, when we start talking about not being able to meet the councils and the communities' expectations. This is a very difficult time for the entire organization. And I have to share that, you know, it's, we're one of the few cities right now going through this in California. Most cities are experiencing an increase in their revenues. They made it through the recessions, and they're starting to recover. And so, you know, not only are we going through this, we're one of the few, and we're going through it alone. And so, some of the camaraderie that we had together during the Great Recession, and we were all in California trying to figure out how to survive the Great Recession, we're doing this a little bit by ourselves. And so, I really have to commend all staff. This was a joint effort, this was teamwork at its best. It's fun to be a team when things are great and there's money to spend, but it's really when times are tough, and I have a brand-new team, many, many who are very new to the cities, other who have been here longer. But I'm just really pleased how everybody stepped up and was part of this process, so I just would like to share that. So for 1415, some updates from the last time that we saw you. In the 1415 budget, you had approved $50,000 for an economic vitality program. I removed that, because we don't have an economic vitality director, and there's no staff to design or implement that program. So those monies are returned then to the general fund. Unfortunately, in the 1415 budget, the revenues for the recreation department were overestimated, and they already were overestimated and came in... were overestimated, and they already were overestimated and came in short from the year before, and so we had to basically cover a ninety-two thousand dollar deficit in the recreation fund. Again, this was done at the finance, as the finance, as the budget was being put together. This is not a reflection on recreation. This was a decision at the management level, when fourteen-fifteen was being put together. And then, as you know, we talked to you at the last meeting about the state revolving fund loan payment, that's an additional expense out of the general fund that was unexpected. And so those are some recent changes to fourteen-fifteen. An update on the, I want to kind of always go back to history, so everybody can track where we've been. It makes, I think, our documentation better. And so when we presented the CAFR, we had a fund balance of three-point-three million dollars. We had the two million dollars in our assigned general fund reserve, which is our rainy day fund, and we had unassigned general fund reserve of the one-point-three million. At the end of fourteen-fifteen, our updated estimate for our ending fund balance is two million dollars. That's about your twenty percent reserve, and there's basically just a small amount of change in the unassigned general fund reserve. So we're anticipating about a two-point-one percent, two-point-one million dollar reserve at the end of this fiscal year. So again, recapping, when we presented on May 11th, at the time, we thought we had two-point-six million that we were projecting at the end of this fiscal year, and potentially a half million dollars would be available to help balance the budget if council chose to use revenue, to use general fund reserves, unassigned general fund reserves to do that. And at the time, we had revenues of nine-point-nine million. We were presenting expenditures of ten-point-five million, and basically, we were gonna need to use nine-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars to balance the budget, leaving the city with one-point-six million in reserves, at a fifteen percent reserve. And so we all agreed that that wasn't an appropriate fiscal plan, and so that's why we're coming back tonight, was not to draw from reserves. This is an updated general fund reserve estimate, because of the additional half million that we've had to take out to pay the state revolving fund. This is now what we're projecting. This is a ten million dollars in revenue, we've made some slight adjustments. We've dropped our expenditures down to the nine-point-six, nine-point-nine million total, and so we have a small surplus going into the general fund reserves, and we anticipate being at about twenty-two percent as this is laid out currently. And so we've been able to come up with a little additional revenue, and the expenditure cuts necessary to be able to present to you, based on your direction this evening, a balanced budget on June 23rd, while still protecting our general fund reserves. I presented in February 2015, a long-range financial forecast, that was sort of our first discussion about some of the fiscal challenges that the city is facing. This was the forecast in 2015, and we talked about the fact that fifteen-sixteen was gonna have a shortfall, and that there really weren't adequate funds to, in the operating budget, to be able to manage the city in the years ahead. After we put the budget together and presented it to you on May 11th, with the additional expenditures, and the, from fifteen-six, from fourteen-fifteen and fifteen-sixteen, our picture looked tremendously weaker. And so the update now, with the budget information that we're presenting today, is, this year is a difficult year, we're overspending by one-point-two million dollars, and we've talked about the reasons for that. But fifteen-sixteen, as you can see, is now balanced, and the rest of the years, we stay now above the line. But I caution, because the, many of the expenditures that we're cutting for fifteen-sixteen are one-time. And so although it's difficult to say this graph is inaccurate, I need to say that it really doesn't say the whole picture, and that's why I put in the red at the bottom, to remind everyone that really, next year, many of the things that we're cutting in fifteen-sixteen, they're not sustainable, and that we're gonna have to look at additional revenue sources or more cuts, again, for sixteen-seventeen. So the picture is certainly better, we have a much better year ahead in the sense of being able to balance, but the city is by no means out of the financial woods, and it is certainly not stable, in my opinion, yet. Okay, so we have categories, in my staff report, I apologize, there was an error, I said there were six categories, there was actually seven categories of expenditure reductions. The first one is in the city manager's office, and that's to postpone the filling of the Economic Vitality Director ACM position. Because the position was vacant, we budgeted it only at the seventy-five percent. We were trying as hard as we could to even reduce costs in our first presentation to you, and so the savings is only a hundred-and-eighteen thousand, because again, it was budgeted at the seventy-five percent. And so we're recommending that that position not be filled for fifteen-sixteen. Oh, that got out of order. Well, those were the principles that, alrighty then. Let me go back. So the principles that I followed in putting this expenditure package together was that I followed the council goals and strategic objectives. I looked at the entire organization and worked as a team. I asked all the departments to present reductions. All the departments came to the table with some kind of reductions. We considered which departments had been reduced over the past five years, and literally didn't have arms and limbs, and couldn't reduce anymore, and which possibly still could. I assessed management positions, as you know, executive level, management level, and line staff as well. And my focus was really to preserve services. We want to continue to deliver important, critical services that this community enjoys and appreciates and expects from our organization, and thereby, we also preserve jobs, so it goes hand-in-hand. It's very important that we meet legal and regulatory responsibilities, and so there are certain things we just cannot cut. We, as a city, have obligations of things that we have to do, and I also tried to focus on, to keep moving forward. We can't just stop, we can't cut everything and suddenly stall, and not be able to move forward as a community and as an organization. And so those were the principles that guided me and my team as we went through this process. Got out of order, so now we're going back. Sorry about that. The first one was the city manager's office, as I mentioned. The second one was out of the city attorney's budget. The council had asked if we could see if there was an opportunity to reduce that. I do need to say that this is a demand-driven service, and so we try very hard, Tom and his firm work very hard, to minimize the costs that we have. We try to do as much work and research as possible. We try to present full, complete pieces of information, we don't just call up and say, "Hey, we don't know about this, can you do all the research?" We try very hard to do much of it ourselves, and so only the last, very legal part needs to be done by his firm. So I have cut the budget by a hundred thousand dollars, but I can't control lawsuits, and I can't control certain things that occur. And so my commitment to you, along with our finance director, Ms. Mids, is as we come back with our quarterly updates, which we haven't done in many, many years, we will be doing quarterly updates to the budget, that we will let you know where we are in our expenditures. And that way, we'll know if we need, if we do need to add funds for some reason. But right now, I've cut a hundred out of that. Third is a citywide closure. This would be to close City Hall the three days before Thanksgiving, and the four days between Christmas and New Year's. This gives us a savings of about four-hundred, forty thousand dollars for the general fund. These are unpaid days off for all staff except public safety. This does require labor negotiations with our labor union, our representative group. It affects all levels of employees, and it's a pay cut, basically. They cut fifty-six hours out of their paid schedule, and so this is about a two-and-a-half percent pay cut for employees for fifteen-sixteen. For library services, I had identified a three-hundred-thousand-dollar savings that we would look at the services, we would look at the staffing, we would look at hours of operation. I'm continuing to request that, and that's included in how we're balancing the budget. I'm excited to work on a volunteer program, it's something that the council's been asking for, it's something that I think will really enhance the library, and I believe that there'll be savings there as well. I'm very excited about the strategic plan that's already underway, I've met with the consultant that's working on that, and we will look at our library, work together, friends and foundation, the library board, the community, as we build a fiscally sustainable service model for our wonderful library. The next item, which is next on the agenda, is the use of the trust, of the TWEET trust funds, and so I'm not gonna talk about a backfill for that three-hundred-thousand dollars. I'm looking for direction on whether you would like that cut out of the budget, and then the next item will be, if you'd like to look at the opportunity to backfill that through the TWEET trust funds. The next item is number five. This is to really work on a collaboration between the library and the recreation department. The recommendation is to close the teen center facility. The reason this facility was opened years ago was, our teens were a little bored, quite frankly, and when teens are bored, they get themselves into a little bit of trouble. And so to have a place to go, where they have structure, where they have support, where they learn life skills, is really important for our youth. And so I do not take this recommendation lightly. I believe that there are a group of teens that will be impacted by this, but I'd like to work with the library and see how we can still meet the needs of the teens through the library and through other nonprofits that we have in the community. I think there's opportunities to do that, and I look forward to working with the library staff and recreation to be able to look at that. There is no cost savings here, and so if this is not of interest to council, it doesn't save money or cut funds either way. What it does, is it opens up the opportunity to be able to sell the entire property. We have, city owns some office buildings that are quite old, that we lease out right now to a hospital, and then the teen center. And by selling, by closing the teen center and having the opportunity to sell that entire parcel, it's much more valuable than selling the parcel around it and having the teen center sit there on the corner. And so that's, that's the idea behind the closure of the teen center. But again, there's no savings at this time through that. Number six, in the police department. Again, sitting down with the police department with the police chief, we looked at what opportunities there were in the police department. Police department's already been cut over the years, we felt that, the chief and I felt that it was at the bare minimum. There just wasn't an opportunity to cut. If you look at the cars, if you look at the equipment, if you look at the kind of staffing that we need for this current police department, and so the chief and I agreed, and this is where character and leadership come in, to save two officer jobs, the police chief has agreed to be laid off. And so that's the recommendation, and so we can stay fully staffed, we can always have two officers on for safety purposes, and so that's the recommendation, a savings of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. We did speak with Calistoga. We would like to continue to explore consolidation of dispatch services. When we spoke to Calistoga, their feeling on consolidating police departments was, if there was any loss of service to any Calistoga residents, they were not interested. And when you start right at this, at the top, and you consolidate two departments, you have a chief who will be spending some time in St. Helena and some time in Calistoga, and for them, that basically, the conversation didn't move farther than that. At this time, they're not interested in the consolidation of the two departments. They are interested in further discussing a consolidation of dispatch, but the condition is very clear that they would be in charge of dispatch. They would absorb our dispatch. There would not be an opportunity for St. Helena to bid on that, or to look at us running dispatch. It would be run by them, but I think it's something that has the opportunity to save about a hundred thousand dollars, and I think that we should explore that over the next year. We also spoke to the Napa sheriff at this time, from what we could tell, it was about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar savings. There's a tremendous amount of transition costs, so you don't just transition from one agency to the next. We'd have to change computer systems and hardware. It has a huge impact on the officers, and a change like that takes time and thoughtfulness, and a lot of negotiations. And so if that's something that the council's interested in pursuing, I'd be happy to take that direction and work on that in the future. But for this budget, in the time that we had, I don't recommend moving forward with any kind of takeover by, or providing of services by the Napa sheriff. And from the best we could tell, it was about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar savings for the first year or two, and so we didn't feel that that was the right recommendation for this fifteen-sixteen budget. The last department was the fire department, and I appreciate, I appreciate that the chief went through and took a look at his equipment, and felt that there were some equipment that still had some life left in its useful life, and he could go without any replacement of certain pieces. And also, the Firefighters Association has been very gracious and generous with us, and so he felt that if something truly needed to be replaced, that he could ask the association, and that they would help replace that piece of equipment, to be able to help the city through this challenging year. And so we're asking for forty thousand dollars from that department. There was an error in the staff report, it did say forty-five, it's forty thousand dollars. And the other item within the police, within the fire department, and we discussed this very, very briefly, on May 11th, we do need to look at our fire department, we need to look at the service model, and be sure that it's really meeting all of the legal requirements, and that we're properly running a, and it is not a, it is not a volunteer fire department, this is a paid-by-call fire department. We do not have a volunteer fire department. We need to make sure that the structure around that paid-by-call fire department is appropriate. There may be some costs involved as we look at this model in the months ahead, and we'll be coming back to council sometime in fall to share some different service models with you, and any potential associated costs with that. Those are the reductions. They total about eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. The funded revenue... I missed a slide that must have dropped out. So we were looking at nine-hundred, we were looking at about a million-dollar shortfall. In the staff report, I had mentioned that about a hundred thousand dollars from our new planning director, he has been able to implement policies and fees that are already in place and haven't been properly followed. And so just through the proper application of our own policies and fees, we've increased the revenue for the planning department by about a hundred thousand dollars. In addition, we have ninety thousand dollars in service credits from our disposal company, it's part of our franchise agreement, and that can be used for a variety of purposes. They wrote us a letter that said, we could use that to cover our refuge bill for fifteen-sixteen, and that totals about forty-five thousand dollars. And so with those additional revenues, and the cuts of about eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars, that's what's balancing the fifteen-sixteen budget. And that information was included in the staff report, I just neglected to put a slide up for it. So revenue enhancement options during the strategic planning, you've adopted strategic objectives, this is already included, but I just wanted to reiterate that we have money in to work on an initiative for council's consideration to become a charter city, and look at a real property transfer tax. We have funding in to conduct a fee study for planning, public works and building, and any other fees that we charge, and we have a rate review, funding in for a rate review for water and wastewater. For our non-departmental area, we did write a letter to the Controller of the Napa County Flood Protection and Watershed Improvement Authority, we're asking to do an early drawdown of the Measure A funds, even before we get to the five-point-two million, which is legally allowable for them to be able to collect on our behalf to pay down our debt. I am asking to see if we can do an early withdrawal, and maybe back it up through a general fund or some other collateral, and so that letter is off, and we will consider, continue to pursue that option in the months ahead. Council asked me also to bring back some information on a short-term sales tax measure. What we would need to do is identify some sort of a percentage amount, quarter cent, a half cent, one percent. Currently, in the entire county, we have an eight percent sales tax. Council would need to look at what period of time a sales tax would be in place, and what the uses of the revenues are. For general uses, it's a majority vote plus one. For any designated uses, it's a two-thirds vote. A sales tax could be on the November third election for 2015, but it would need to be called by August seventh by the council. You could do an election on June seventh or November eighth of next year, and they would need to be called by March eleventh or August twelfth, respectively. The election code also allows for a mailed ballot. There's some very specific criteria, and we would need to be sure that we're following those criteria, based on the opinion of the city attorney. And the first time we could have a special election that's mailed in would be March eighth of 2016. The election must be called by December eleventh. A special election would cost the city around thirty to fifty thousand dollars. Finally, the council asked me to look at some potential properties that the city owns that we could sell or lease. Again, as I talked about with the teen center, this is fifteen-seventeen and fifteen-seventy-four railroad. Those could be in a long-term lease or be sold. Thirteen-sixty Oak Avenue, that's the Carnegie Building, that could be leased or sold. Main Street, that's City Hall, and the police station, again, leased or sold, we have nowhere to go, but we could figure it out. The Adam Street property... Um, the Adam Street property, the 1400, um, Adam Street, which is a vacant parcel. And then we have the Signorelli Barn, um, which interestingly enough is actually part of the parcel of, um, Jacob Miley Park. And so we would have to do some sort of a parcel split, but the council could consider selling that portion of the property and the barn. So again, just as a reminder, we're down to the 2.1 million, um, estimated general fund reserve, so we're at that 20-20, 20 to 22%. Our total revenues are projected at 10 million. Our expenditures are expected at 9.9 million, and therefore with, with this package of the additional revenues of about 145,000 plus the 828,000, um, in cuts and some ticking and tying, um, we are, we can present to you, um, a balanced budget on, on June 23rd with a general fund reserve intact at 22%. The public works director is gonna do a update on the CIP, provide the CIP plan, uh, five-year plan to you, but I also wanted to show you the water fund, um, net position. There was a change, um, we did neglect in the 1314 budget to put the nego- the, um, contract, contractually agreed to increase of 3% with, with, um, Napa Water. That was neglected in 1314, which means it wasn't in 1314, wasn't in 1415, it wasn't in 1516. So we had to correct that as well as, um, add it into 1516 because it wasn't in our first budget that we brought to you. And so, um, in, uh, water, we have, um, uh, we are tapping a bit into reserves to cover that. And then for wastewater, um, we are balanced and, and not using, um, cash from the net position in wastewater. Again, we have recommended expenditures, um, the reductions, our expenditures are 9.9, almost $10 million. Um, there is no contribution from the general fund, and with these recommendations, um, the, the budget is, is balanced. Um, I put this up as, um, a reminder slide, just kind of adding everything up and, and hopefully will hel- help council as they consider these options. Um, and I am here, the exec staff is here, um, Director Mits is with me, and so we're, we're happy to answer any technical questions you have. Um, if there's other reduction areas that you're interested in discussing, we hope that we can provide you with information as well. But I am hopeful that this meets your expectations, um, and is a fair and, um, the least, um, impactful on the community as we were able to put together. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any initial questions from council?
One, one question, and, um, that is, can you give us an example of, you know, a, a half cent, um, or half percent sales tax increase, what that would translate to in terms of dollars?
Uh, sales tax revenue is coming in about 2.2. I think it's about 2.2 million, um, and so it would be, a half cent sales tax would be about a 1 million, um, 1.1 million dollars.
Any further initial questions? Councilmember Crowe, do you have any, uh, questions of staff at this point?
Um, no additional questions at this time.
All right. And then at this point, I'll open the public hearing.
Jay Green, 1516 Oak Avenue, an address I've occupied for 30 years now. And Lowell Smith was mayor when I first came to town, and I certainly support the remarks he made earlier in public forum. This is a very serious hit that is being proposed to the library, and, uh, I think we're all concerned, disappointed, dismayed by the extent of it. To give you an idea of just the programs that the library offers, um, there were, over the past three years, there were in the fiscal year ending, uh, 2013, 192 programs with some, uh, almost 3,400, uh, audience members, attendees. In the next year ending, uh, 2014, there was a, uh, a lesser number, 154, and about 3,800, uh, attendees. And in the fiscal year ending '15, which is in three weeks' time from now, uh, there were 214 programs and 5,500, over 5,500 members of, of, uh, the community attending these programs. If these cuts go through, there will be no programs. None. Not a reduction. None. This is serious. I was very upset to hear of, uh, the dismissal, not a layoff, dismissal of the chief librarian, and then I learned today that it was proposed that the chief of police, she apparently, uh, offered herself a sacrifice. But that is, that is, has a serious impact on our community. In 1971, I was in the steamship business on California Street in San Francisco, and we were faced with a long Sherman strike. We didn't know how long the strike was gonna last, and it was agreed among all of us that executives, I was one of them at the time, um, executives would take a 75% pay cut for however long the strike lasted. It lasted more than six months. Now, what we sacrificed at that time was paid back, and I certainly would hope that, that, that would be the same if the city were to adopt that position. It's important that belt tightening be across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
Hello, uh, Leslie Stanton. I'm a 30-year library employee. I choose now to address my remarks, it could have been at any point. Jennifer Baker has worked tirelessly to promote the library, to make it a community gathering place. She created programs and policies for everyone in this community to be included and welcomed. She should have been given a gala goodbye, not an inglorious human resources escort from the building. It was shameful. Her vision and hard work won our small-town library national recognition by including everyone in this community, embracing the wine industry, the Latino community, children commu- child, schoolchildren and their parents, teens. The arts were promoted constantly. She gave a platform to artists, musicians, speakers and performers, and made their performances free for everyone. In 2014, the St. Helena Public Library was awarded runner-up best small library in America. Jennifer Baker worked the intricate balance of library board, friends and foundation, staff, citizenry, city council, city hall, vast library patronage, the SNAP consortium, local, state and national library groups and services, and diverse community groups and organizations. She did it with style, poise, humor and intelligence. Library staff met with Jennifer Phillips several times over the past few weeks. Jennifer repeatedly emphasized the dire straits of the city's economy. We understood, even as the proposed budget cuts to the library rose to 300,000. She asked us for our input, and we gave it to her. It was not presented tonight, as of yet. Jennifer Baker came with, up with an alternative scen- scenario that the library board and friends and foundation backed. At the last of the two-hour meet, at the last of the meetings, a two-hour meeting, Jennifer Phillips abruptly fired Jennifer Baker. Jennifer Baker packed her personal belongings and, as I said, was escorted out of the building. That same building where she has worked the past eight years and gained much community support and recognition. Jennifer Phillips has created a managerial crisis by abruptly firing the one person that knows how things work at the library. Let me add, as Del Britton used to say, uh, St. Helena's most precious community asset. She has, uh, she will install, she has installed, we were introduced to the new person who knows nothing about libraries, will be part-time. Jennifer Phillips' actions were disgraceful. How was she able to eliminate the director position without council approval? Or if she did have your approval, then you should be ashamed for how it was carried out.
Thank you. No clapping, please.
Thank you.
No clapping, we don't prevent it in city council meetings.
Good evening, members of the council, mayor and city manager. Uh, I hate to hear about what happened. It truly is very, very sad. But the other thing is sad that I'm hearing tonight is that we're making it personal, and that shouldn't happen. You know, an administrator is an administrator, um, who sometimes does very difficult things, but I really hate to hear these comments making it personal. The other two things I wanted to mention is, um, uh, one possibility might be looking at the health plan that the city council has for themselves and their families, and I wonder how much savings the city could realize if you only gave health coverage to the council members and not their family. I'd be interested in knowing that. And then one comment about the police department, it looks like you've analyzed this quite thoroughly, but I saw in the Press Democrat last Sunday, uh, a survey about safest cities in California. So I went to their website, and sure enough, St. Helena is the safest city in the state of California. Calistoga is 12th, and, uh, Napa is 61st. So that either means that we have a very good police department, or it means that we don't need this much of a police department.
Thank you very much.
Linda Burton, on, at, from Allen Avenue. Um, I'm a former trustee and currently serving on the foundation board, speaking tonight as an individual, not on behalf of the board. I, along with others, am most concerned with the library director's termination and the manner in which it was conducted. As you've heard, Jennifer led the library to national prominence and expanded the library into a vibrant community center. She deserved better treatment than being told at 4:00 PM she needed to clean out her office and vacate the premises. Most disheartened that Mayor, that Mayor Galbraith apparently approved of the city manager's actions. I never would have believed that you would countenance such treatment. The second concern is the damaging effect Jennifer Baker's termination will have on the foundation and our fundraising efforts on behalf of the library. The manner in which the city manager communicated and interacted with the trustees and the foundation damaged the trust and goodwill that many of us had for her. Many in the community have expressed similar concerns, and it may well unfortunately manifest into decreased donations when we need them the most.
Thank you very much.
My name is Bonnie Long, I live on Pino Way. I've been on the St. Helena Library Board of Trustees for 11 years, and I served as St. Helena City Manager from February 1st, 1997 until June 30, 2003. During the past 18 years, I've worked with three professional library directors and watched our library evolve into the award-winning library we have today. Services have expanded to serve a more diverse population, and the library has in many ways become St. Helena's community center. Now our city council is in the difficult position of needing to cut a million dollars from the general fund budget and borrow half a million from the reserves to balance the budget by the June 30 deadline. I know these are difficult times. I've been a city manager, and I know the city manager and her staff have worked diligently to present the council with a balanced budget to you. I have three concerns as we move forward with adoption of the 2015-16 budget. Staff's recommendation to cut the library board budget, the library budget by $300,000 is 30% of the million-dollar target. That doesn't seem fair when the library is 10% of the total general fund budget. Two, the city council needs to know what this will mean in service level reductions before adopting a budget that's been reduced by $300,000. And lastly, I'm concerned about the library being under the direction of someone who is not a professional librarian. Considering the changes that we will need to make with the magnitude of cuts, the challenge will be immense, and I think it's important, it, it's important to have someone with experience in, and someone who is, who's got a library degree to do that, and so I would ask the council to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Yeah, hi, my name is Dave Reed. I've, uh, just been a resident of St. Helena for about a year now, and it's a huge honor and kind of the fulfillment of a dream to be here. Um, forgive me because I did not expect to be here, as I just read a Facebook post in the middle of the Warriors game about what was happening tonight. Um, but I felt that it was really an important time to be here. Um, just a few thoughts, because nothing's prepared and, and it won't be eloquent, but in regards to the teen center, if there is no funds to be brought in to that, or no loss of funds, as much as it might be a great short-term fix, you know, there's nothing more important than teens. My kids are grown or whatnot, but I've been there. I've been in a small town when you have nothing to do, and if you let that go, I don't know how you're gonna be able to get that back again. And so I would just strongly encourage the thought if, if it's not gonna be a major switch to, to, uh, change things. The library situation is a huge thing, but that's what makes this town more than just a tourist destination and makes it a community. And, um, and I, the one point I would agree on is someone with a, with a library degree on that, um, whether it's part-time or a consultant or someone inside. Uh, apart that, thank you for what you do, thank you for everyone for being here. I know it's a tough time, but rather than point fingers or whatnot, let's all work together and get involved and, and have things have to be made, so that's what I got. Thanks.
Thank you, welcome to the community.
Yeah, thank you. Any further public comment? All right. Now, we only permit one public comment, Mr. Green.
I, I realize, but I'm, I wasn't able to make a point that is...
Well, it's, we just allow it once. Yes, please. Yeah, no, Mr. Green, we only, we only allow public comment once, uh, three minutes, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, you, you fellows get to talk a lot, and we get three minutes.
Go ahead, please.
I also was not planning to speak, but feel that I need to. My name is Trudy Bullany. I live at 497 Silverado Trail, St. Helena, and I have lived here for 32 years. I brought up my two children here. They started with a mother-infant support group many years ago, right through, through high school. They both had a wonderful education. Our home was filled with books. Many people here probably have homes that were filled with books. However, I work in Calistoga with a volunteer group that goes into classrooms to read to kids and take books through our Seroptimus Club. St. Helena on the surface looks like a very prosperous town, but there are a lot of kids in this town who do not have books. It is well researched that books in the home make a huge difference to the academic success of children in the future. If we do not give the library a priority in this community for those kids to go in and get books, take them home, read them and share them, it's a very poor thing for our town. The library is so important, um, and I agree with whoever said just now, $300,000 out of their budget, it seems so unfair, and you need a professional to run a library. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, then I'll close public comment and invite council discussion, maybe start with you, Mr. Pitts.
Look, this is, this is challenging for everyone, and, um, I think there are a lot of challenging suggestions in terms of, can you hear me okay? In terms of our, our budget, I think that... In terms of our, our budget, I think that after balancing this year's budget, whatever we decide to do, we really need to focus on creating revenue. I think it's imperative that we focus on that in the future. And I think we've not focused on it enough in the past, and that's part of why we are where we are today. As much as it pains me to have to make these decisions, you know, I feel honored to have folks like Chief Rubin in this community stepping up the way that she is. It almost brings me tears to have to listen to these stories. But we have to get our, our financials in order. And if we don't do it now and make these difficult decisions, we're going to be continued to be plagued by these challenges and problems every year. There's a lot of focus tonight on the library. The budget is in excess of $1 million right now, and I believe, and I've done a little bit of research on this, and someone, please correct me if I'm wrong, that if you look at libraries across the country, and yes, ours is one of the best, and I'm very proud of that, the average budget for libraries with populations under 10,000 people is about $250,000 a year. Now, there's a range. And so I believe that innovation comes from necessity. We have necessity right now. We need to be innovative. If we just continue to backfill this budget, we won't right the ship. We'll be dealing with the problem again, three, five, 10 years from now. And so while these are difficult decisions, I'm fully supportive of our, of our city manager in what she's outlined. I would like to explore whether or not there are some variations to some of these cuts, and is there a range we can look at that might pull a little bit from here and there? I'd also like to, and maybe it's, and you know, we need to get the budget done in this meeting as much as we can so that we can have it finalized by the end of this month. But I do want to really focus on revenue. I have some other ideas that I can add to the list. I don't know that we need to talk about that tonight, but there are some things I think we need to, need to look at in addition to what you've already identified. So those are my initial comments.
Mr. Green?
Well, thank you for those comments, Greg. I appreciate those, and they're heartfelt, I can tell. I had, I had similar comments. You know, we're in a tough, very difficult time right now, and we do need to cut our budget. But we also need to hear from the community, and it's important for the community to weigh in, because it's your community. We're here representing you, and we have to have that give and take. We have to balance the recommendations of our city manager with our gut feeling, what we know about government, but ultimately what you expect from your community. And so it's good to have this dialogue. These cuts are necessary. I agree with you, Greg, that there, I think there are some variation of the cuts. In our last meeting, I, I indicated that the general fund to the library was not sustainable over time, and I, I believe that today. I recommended that we go back to the 2013-2014 area, so I was looking at about $200,000 in cuts. $300,000 to me, I'm not comfortable with that right now. I think it's too severe a haircut. I also think that frankly, and I have to say this, and I understand you right here, but in, in my heart of hearts, I think that our city attorney budget is a little too excessive, too exorbitant, and that that has to be driven down. I agree with the city manager that you can never predict how that's going to turn out. But you also have to compare it to best practices in small communities and what we have. And I've been practicing law for 27 years, and I rely on my experience. I've managed budgets. I've been on city councils to manage budgets. We started with $770,000 in that budget. We, we've now recommended $670,000. I think it's too high, so I'd like to see a little bit of reduction there, excuse me, an increase there of the reduction. And I'm not comfortable with the $300,000 yet. I'm still, frankly, I'm grappling with the service level, and I, I need to hear more from our staff, and I'm sure staff will, will comment on, on that question. Several people have talked about the service level reduction in the library, and I, I don't have enough information there to understand how that's going to work. That's an important factor for me. The library is not sustainable, but the library, as someone said, makes our community, and I wholly agree with that. It makes our community, and we have to focus on that. So there's some wiggle room there. 1.1 million of the general fund, plus the other monies from the trust fund, it's just, we can't operate that way. There's no way we can operate that way. I also like to say that I commend our chief, police chief for, you know, accepting that layoff. It's unbelievable, you know, and I, I agree with you that, I, it's like, wow. With respect to the situation with the library director, you know, we, we can't comment on that. We, that, that is a personnel decision. Not sure I have enough facts. Frankly, I don't have any facts to know the basis of that decision. So I just want that to be out there. The city manager will have to work through that one, and I, I don't know enough detail to comment on it. It would be unfair for me to comment one way or another. You have to know that. By the fact that the mayor did not say any details, give any details, and some people chuckled a little bit, that's because he cannot, and we cannot. So we have, you have to understand that we have our own legal obligations. I think we have a lot, you know, this is, it was, you know, the, the personnel issues are very difficult, no question about it, and, and I feel bad about that. It's a difficult decision. But the financial picture is not the end of the world. We're going to get through this together. We have a competent staff. We have a competent city council. We're going to work through this. I, I hope we avoid the us versus them and all work together to try to, to find the common ground where we can make this work together. It's so easy for us to go, those guys are the ones who did it, or them, and you, you see it in the newspaper, the, the different comments, and really, let's, let's be on the same team. We're, we're St. Helens. We need to work together. We all have the same ideas in mind. We have to come together as a community, realize, you know, through the experts, this is what the true picture is, and now how do we address that as a community? So those are my comments for now.
All right, Ms. Croll?
Okay, so, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So I'm just going to go through my thoughts. First of all, I just want to say that I completely support Jennifer, and I know that this has been incredibly difficult for everybody in the city staff to come up with these cuts, and, and difficult for us as well. With respect to the cut number one, the postponing, the fulfilling economic vitality of the manager position, I agree with her on that. It does bother me to cut positions that might generate revenue. So what I would say is I agree with this cut, but I would like to have this one, want to be first in line to be filled if in fact you come up with some additional revenue short-term, like in the next budget year. With, with respect to the city attorney budget, I am a little concerned about the $100,000, only because as those of us who have been on the council know, any, anyone with the amount of money for a filing fee can file a lawsuit against the city, and we have to defend ourselves, even if it's not meritorious. So we can't control that, and it's, I hope we can cut that amount of money, but unfortunately, there are lawyers out there, for whatever reason, think that public entities have a deep well, which we don't. With respect to closing the city hall during winter holidays, it really, really, really bothered me to ask our staff to take a 2.5% pay cut. I don't think it's possible for us to retain or attract quality people if we have to have furloughs at a time when no one else in the city does. So I would like to find a way to fund those cuts so that we don't have to do that. One of my ideas for that, which is not going to make me popular, is the fact that, and anyone who has followed my beliefs on this topic knows how I feel about this, I have never, ever been comfortable with the fact that we have, you know, basically played God and decided which five or six nonprofits in our town deserve our funding. I don't think that's fair. We did not have a public process at all this year in order to, in order to, for those nonprofits to request funding. So I, I would suggest that we fill that gap by cutting some of the contributions to the, and not completely cutting. I'm still suggesting that we fund them, because I know that part of their state grant funding money depends on support from the city. So I would suggest that we cut the Boys and Girls Club funding from $6,000 to $1,000. The Family Center from $7,500 to $1,000, to make, basically make it $1,000 across the board. And that would provide some funding to their staff so that we can retain and attract quality staff, and that they don't, they are not forced to take a 2.5% pay cut. With respect to the library, this is really difficult. I, as Greg says, other small towns, we've been operating under, in, in a perfect world with the library, which has been fantastic. Everybody loves it. Everybody has benefited from it. Nobody, nobody wanted to see money cut from the library, but unfortunately, we don't live in a perfect world anymore. Frankly, it's time for those who love the library and don't live within the city limits to get out their checkbooks if possible, because this, this library, unlike others, is funded by the city of St. Helena and not the county, and our state funding has been considerably cut. With respect to the consolidation of the library and recreation, I have serious, serious concerns about closing the teen center. I have teenagers, I'm hopefully at the far end of the teenager process, but I do know that, I'm a little bit familiar with the mentality of teenagers, and the fact that our teen center is two blocks from the RLS, and when we say teen center, it really serves the middle school population. And the middle school population, to me, is the most fragile and at-risk population of our teenagers, because that's when kids make good or bad decisions. And the teen center, two blocks from the middle school, has provided an incredible safe haven for them to come to after school. Unfortunately, I know the teen mentality. I don't think they're going to walk another three blocks to the library, plus the teen room at the library is right next to the little kids, and that doesn't work for middle school kids. I just think that we, since it doesn't save any money, we could defer this, this consolidation for a year and see what happens, just because I really believe that that is critical. I mean, the whole reason that we started this teen center was because we were starting to have a gang situation, and, and our, our middle school kids were starting to make bad decisions. So I really think that it served an incredibly important purpose. I'm really, really saying with respect to the police department, like the other council members, I'm incredibly thankful to Jackie. It shows an incredible amount of grace and just incredible amount of, I don't know. She's, she's just really been awesome, and to, to save a couple of positions for officers and take that, and take that layoff. And then with respect to the revenue enhancing, I do think, I agree with the city manager, and I would support long-term leases in particular of some of the city-owned properties. So those are sort of my thoughts in a nutshell.
Yeah. Councilmember White?
And thank you to the fire department also, sorry. Thank you to the fire department also for deferring some plant replacements.
Okay. So I agree with all three of you at this point. I really think that this is a very difficult thing, and I would like to commend our city manager and all the staff for, for what they've presented to us. I mean, we've, with, you know, it's a tough thing to take services and, and, and cut them and, and have to lay people off, but we've, this community has said no to so many revenue sources over the years that this is, this is the end result that we've come up to. You know, we've held prices down with, with our water and sewer bills and, for many, many years, and four years ago, we had to, to raise the rates, and, and that was a tough thing. And we've got to do it again. And if we, you know, if we don't turn our focus to revenue, then, excuse me, then we're, you know, we're going to keep coming back and coming back to the same, having to cut, cut back on services and cut back on, on, you know, everything that we do. It's just, we just can't keep saying no to revenue sources. So, I mean, I commend our staff. I commend our city manager. I think that they've done a wonderful job to be able to come to us with a, with a balanced budget. I mean, there's, there's, I, I would agree with some of the things that Sharon said, especially the teen center. I don't think we need to cut that out right away if there's no economic benefit, but I, I think we need to have that ready to go if there's an opportunity to use one of our assets. You know, the teen center and, and the building there on Railroad Avenue for revenue, revenue, you know, generating for the city. And, and I think we should be looking at long-term leases for those areas that, that, you know, we can get, like on Railroad Avenue, we're, in the new general plan, we're going to be taking some of the properties across the street and turning them into mixed use. I mean, maybe there's an opportunity for a developer to put mixed use on, on the city property and, and we lease it for a 50-year period, kind of like what the, the Gasser Foundation is doing so successfully down in Napa. I don't know if there's, I mean, that's, should be our focus going forward, so we don't have to make these difficult cuts year after year. So those are my thoughts.
Well, my thoughts are, in general, in line with those of my colleagues. Having listened to Councilmember Croll, I think at this point, we should not close the teen center. We should keep it open and reevaluate that as we move forward toward the year, and I think there's probably council consensus on that one at this point in time. Obviously, the library presents the most difficult issue. In response to Ms. Burton, none of us on the city council are involved in personnel decisions. That's why we have the council-manager form of government, and, and none of us rightly or wrongly are involved in personnel decisions, but if we were, the council-management form of government could not work. And certainly as mayor, in everything I do, I have tried to respect completely the council-manager form of government. And I've done that not only because it's the right thing to do, but because also, looking at this community over a long period of time, we have not respected that form of government, and, and in consequence, that's in some real measure why we are in the very large degree of difficulty that we're in today. Now, with respect to the library, just a couple of quick figures here. The estimated year-end budget for the library, in other words, ending June 30, 2015, was $1,001,000. The library came in with a budget request for $1,079,000. As I read the record, this is in the context where all departments were asked to look for ways to reduce general fund expenditures. In response to Mr. Green, keep in mind that the general fund does not in general support library programs. By my calculation, 88% of the general fund money goes into salaries and benefits at the library. And so what has to happen here, and I, I have confidence as mayor in, in our city manager, and obviously, it's, the library is hugely important to all of us, and here, we're in a position where as we move forward, we want to do this in a way where we impact the library as little as possible and maintain a, a level of service as great as possible. But it's perfectly apparent from these increases... But it's perfectly apparent from these increases, uh, in the library budget, hitting the general fund, that's the point of it, from year to year, uh, that as council member Doring said last time, it's not sustainable, uh, and it's especially not sustainable in the context, uh, of, uh, having, uh, the city taken a hit, uh, uh, from the Measure A issues, uh, that's absolutely enormous. Uh, uh, I recognize, I campaigned, uh, uh, saying, hey, I don't want any cuts to the library, but at the same time, uh, I had no knowledge, none of us had any knowledge of these Measure A hits, uh, uh, that, uh, that have hit, uh, uh, the general fund, uh, and they have been exceedingly, extremely destabilizing, and we have to act in the environment in which we're in. Uh, and I would further say that, uh, that city policy has been, uh, twenty-five percent, uh, assigned general reserve, not twenty-two percent, not twenty percent. Uh, it's risky for us to take it down to twenty-two percent or twenty percent. Uh, uh, we hope, uh, that we'll be able to build it up, I would hope, in the, in the next year or two, but, but, but if some disaster hits us, uh, we need a significant reserve to keep operating, and we have an obligation to our residents, uh, to keep operating. Uh, with respect to other issues, uh, let me, uh, join my, uh, fellow members of the council and, uh, and, uh, express my very deep gratitude to our police chief. Uh, uh, Ms. Dell said, hey, we were the number one safest community in all of California, and, uh, to my way of thinking, uh, the police chief, uh, has something to do with that, and, and, uh, it's, and, uh, it's very hard, uh, to see her retire, uh, and to, uh, but, but also, uh, she's retiring in the best interest of the community that she served, and, uh, that's extraordinarily self-sacrificing and laudable. Uh, with, uh, with respect to the economic vitality director, I agree with council person Crowe, uh, that it should be a very high priority to bring such a person back on if and when, uh, the revenues, uh, justify it. Uh, in general, uh, with respect to this, uh, budget, uh, I support the, the, the decisions that have been made by the city manager, but keep in mind now that the decisions made by city manager with respect to budget is the product of a long process, uh, uh, that has involved the community, that's involved us, uh, uh, and where we have, uh, provided an awful lot of guidance, and where she's come back with her best recommendations, uh, to keep the city going, uh, at the best, uh, uh, level of service, and she's management, uh, and to my way of thinking, she deserves, uh, considerable, uh, deference, uh, uh, with respect to her, uh, recommendations. I, I must say, uh, having listened to, uh, council member Crowe, uh, that, uh, if there were some way, maybe you can take another look at this in the next two and a half weeks to avoid that two and a half percent cut, uh, uh, to our wonderful employees, uh, I would like to, it's forty thousand dollars, uh, it's not a huge amount of money, uh, and, and, uh, I think it's very hard for us to ask, uh, our employees to sacrifice themselves continuously. Uh, not only is it hard personally on them, uh, but we have to face the fact that if we don't pay our people properly, they will go on to, uh, other positions in other cities. Uh, uh, and, uh, a, a number of examples come right to my mind of people that have, that performed splendid service for this city that today work for other cities, uh, in the area, uh, and when that happens, you also lose the institutional memory, uh, that they build up in time, so there are lots of other indirect costs when you have turnover. Uh, and so, I would ask that perhaps the city manager take, uh, a, a, a look at that, uh, but, uh, those are at least my initial comments, and I perhaps talked a little more than I intended to. Uh, Mr. Pitts, do you have anything further?
I was gonna ask about the same, is there, is there a way to, uh, to look at the unpaid furloughs and somehow offset that perhaps somewhere else? And I agree with number five, the library and recreation collaboration, I think we should look at that more closely, but I don't think it's something we have to do right now. I think as we assess all of our, uh, property inventory with respect to selling or potentially leasing those properties and moving the, the pieces around amongst the properties that we do have, I think we, we, we have a, a long-term problem with City Hall and the police station as well, and that needs to be part of the discussion, um, and how do we maximize the, the efficiency and cash flow to the city from those properties? One thing that I'd like to add to that list, and I don't know if there's an opportunity, but we have a lot of land out by the wastewater treatment facility, and I don't know if technology is such that that land that's used for spray fields can be shrunk, but there's a lot of really high-end estate properties in that neighborhood, and we may be sitting on some value out there, I think we should add that to the list and look at, look at it creatively. Um, those would be my additional comments right now.
With respect to the teen center, um, like Sharon, I have those teens in my house right now. Hers are gone, but, so, I asked them because they're, they're my constituents. Um, and they gave me their opinion, so, um, I agree with the council basically, but I have a different approach to it. I really think we're missing an opportunity to be working with a school district and other non-prof- you mentioned nonprofits, but I, I think the school district is the ideal nonprofit in that sense. Uh, we, we tend to be reactive when we, we deal with some of these issues, and I, I, I campaigned and I, I talked about the idea of a youth and families master plan, and, and this would have been one of the, the areas of collaboration, one of many areas that we're really missing opportunities in terms of mental health services, recreational services, facilities for our youth. We're, we're, we're hitting and missing, you know, we're doing it reactively, but we're not, we don't have an overall vision of collaboration, a framework where we can all work together. And so down the road, I think that, that would be important, I, I think it would be cool, and my, my children, uh, think so too, there's a, first of all, there's not a cool factor in, in going to the library if you're a teen. Uh, my daughter does not go to the teen center anymore, uh, she goes to the library, but, uh, you know, when she got into eighth grade, it, the cool factor was not there anymore. Uh, the cool factor of, of those teens going on to the high school is a different situation. Now, there are issues with the high school, it's not as close, uh, to the middle school, and I agree with Sharon's point on that, but I think there's an opportunity to have a teen center sometime at the high school. You have a pool there, you have a basketball court, you have maybe some buildings there, I don't know, something to explore. I think we can defer that issue, uh, for a while, um, but I, I really think we need to get a hold of that, we're, you know, I, I keep bringing this up, uh, because we have so many other urgencies and priorities, but the notion of getting all of the community together to form some kind of a plan for our youth, so that it's not a hit and miss. Um, I think I agree with most of the other points, um, that were made, uh, generally, if I, if, if I haven't made a point, I tend to, I agree with the recommendations of the city manager. Um, there's no controversy there for me, they're difficult, uh, points of view, but the ones, of course, I'm concerned about are the library and the, um, the, the city attorney budget. And I should say, we have one of the best firms in California representing us, and this has nothing to do with the quality of our representation. I would, I would say also that, actually, when you look at our budget, three hundred thousand is set aside for litigation, well over four hundred thousand is set aside for general services, contract services. So there's a hefty amount already set aside for litigation. Uh, you never know, I agree, that you can't predict that, but a budget can be amended as, uh, times change, as, uh, uh, issues present themselves. Uh, I, uh, I know, I know that Sharon is trained as a lawyer, and so I respect her opinion. I don't, I, I don't have the opinion that, that folks are, uh, are gonna file frivolous lawsuits, or that somehow they, they see the, uh, city vulnerable because they don't have a huge enough city budget. Um, I don't, again, you know, Calistoga has a two hundred thousand dollar city attorney budget, and it's been that way, same firm, by the way, it's been that way for several years. Uh, they went over one year with, with flood control issues, water issues. Uh, Yountville's budget went up also, but theirs is actually under two hundred thousand. So you compare it, and people go, well, we're different. Okay, yeah, I get that, we're different, we have more legal problems, I, I don't know if I can accept that. Um, I would recommend strongly that we reduce that budget, uh, to an amount that we can all agree upon, a little bit more. Um, and I, I, again, I'm still not comfortable with that three hundred thousand in the library, I, I think it should be reduced, um, but I'm not sure about the amount that we're talking about. I'm, I'm, I'm more comfortable with about two hundred thousand, frankly.
Can I add one quick comment to the, um, city attorney discussion?
Sure.
So, one thing that I've noticed in the business I'm in is when you, when you're building contingencies, they get spent. And I think while we may need the money by having a larger budget, if you have a larger budget, it's gonna get spent. If you have a smaller budget, people are gonna drive towards that budget. We may go over, we may have to amend down the road, but I'd be supportive of looking at a, a larger cut there and seeing if we can operate within that smaller budget. And if we absolutely can't, then we address it later. But if we don't set the goal appropriately, not gonna, we're not gonna get there, so.
The, the difficulty I have here is that even if hypothetically you could set a lower amount here or there, uh, the reality is that our reserves are too low, and so if you set a lower amount here or there, to my way of thinking, uh, the prudent thing to do is to increase the reserve, uh, closer to twenty-five percent, which is where we should be. I mean, that's, that's the problem that I see, and it has been city policy, uh, that the reserve should be at twenty-five percent of the general fund budget. And when you look at other cities, most of them are far, uh, in excess of that, uh, as they, uh, think about what could, what disaster could strike them and what immediate funds they might need available. That's the difficulty, and we can't put, uh, emergency preparedness and, uh, the need to keep our city operating out of our minds. Uh, and it's not just a percentage of the city budget, we're a small city, uh, and so twenty-five percent is two and a half billion dollars, and two and a half billion dollars is not much. If you look at the city of Napa and look at its budget, uh, and you've got twenty-five percent, you're talking about some real money. I mean, that's the problem, so it's not just a percentage, it's volume. Uh, uh, and, uh, and, uh, that's where I am on that. I gather from, 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 uh, the absence of discussion that there's no, uh, sense on the part of the council, other than, uh, council member Colt, to look at cutting back on the not-for-profits. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think, uh, I think as far as the nonprofits are concerned, I mean, the four years that I've been on council, I think we've pared those down as, as much as, uh, uh, they can function at, and, and I look at that as, as the, we're really leveraging by the little pittance that we put into it, that, that we're getting a lot back into the community for, for that little investment, so, um, that would be my feeling. No.
Yes.
Of course you can't.
I, okay, I'm fine with keeping the funding for those nonprofits, but I really, really have a problem with asking our people, um, to, to take a two and a half percent pay cut. So I would suggest that we take whatever, and, and I think that the last, the last, um, memo I got from April was actually thirty-six thousand dollars and not the forty, that we take it out of the reserves, because I really don't think it's right. If we can't pay our people, then we, I don't think we can pay extra to the nonprofits. I'm happy to pay the nonprofits, but I do wanna see our people being paid too, otherwise we are not gonna be able to attract and retain, um, quality people, and we have an amazing staff right now, and I'm just really nervous that if we ask them to do this, it, there's gonna be some change. So I would just say that, um, I'm, I'm fine with keeping the money, the funding for the nonprofits, but I would, I would ask that we take that additional, whatever it's gonna cost to furlough them out of the reserves, and I know that might take us under the number, but I just think it's critical.
Okay.
I'm, I, just to respond to that, I would not be in favor of, of taking any monies out anywhere and just leaving the nonprofit, uh, monies as they are at this point, uh, fully funded, as we have funded them. I think the one side of this, I, I, I respect the comment, and I agree with the comment, that we need to treat our employees, uh, as fairly as possible, and that if we can find a way to not, uh, have those furloughs, I'd be in favor of that. The other side of it is that in the nonprofit area, it, it, one of the things that we rely on heavily in this community is volunteer, uh, service. Okay, we don't wanna send a message that we don't respect our volunteers, that, and they're part of, you know, the nonprofit, uh, world. And so there's that other side to it, you know, we wanna be real careful about how we treat our volunteers. Frankly, we need to massage and take care of our volunteers and encourage them to be a part of our community. That's how the community continues to thrive. So, uh, in my, in my view, when you start cutting back, really, to, to piddly amounts of money to the nonprofits, I think they're piddly already, frankly, they're, they're embarrassing, but that's what they are. Um, to do that even more sends the wrong message to, to our volunteers out in the community.
Well, I think it's fair to say that there's a sense of council that we should not cut back on the not-for-profits. I think there's a sense of council that, that, uh, that we would like to avoid, uh, reductions in pay to our employees, uh, uh, and, uh, maybe we have to send you back for a little more work, but I think this is just tweaking around the edges at this point. Uh, I think in general, uh, if I'm sensing council correctly, that the council's accepting of the, of the recommendations that you've made, uh, and, uh, we look to you to exercise, uh, uh, your discretion around the edges. It's not a lot here, 'cause there's not a lot of maneuvering room, uh, and to bring us back, uh, some final numbers, uh, and at that point, uh, uh, my hope and prayer is that, uh, none of us are gonna be confined in Sacramento for failure to meet the deadline. Does that, does that, does that get you enough direction for this evening?
It absolutely does, thank you very much.
All right.
So one, one other thing, just, I, I noticed here that if we were gonna consider a short-term sales tax measure, there are some deadlines with respect to when we'd have to put that in motion. For, I guess, November third, we'd have to call that by August seventh, so that's coming quickly. Um, is that something we wanna talk about at all?
I, my, my sense of it would be that that's just too fast, uh, for us here. Let's get this in place. I said, my sense of it is that that's just too fast for us here, uh, that we should get the budget in place, and then with respect to sales tax, I think that's gonna take a serious, uh, discussion by council, uh, evaluating the, the odds of getting one passed, how it should be done, whether it should be done in a special election, general election, but I think that's a significant discussion, and how that also ties into a property sales, uh, transfer tax, uh, which I think we've all agreed, we should, we should try to implement if we can. So, uh, my view of it is that that needs to be set for a real discussion, uh, and I don't see that we're gonna have the time to do it, uh, before the end of this fiscal year in light of everything else that, that we're dealing with. It's too, it's too large a discussion.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
I, I think we, you know, if we're gonna look at that, we really need to consider a campaign going forward to be able to even have a chance at getting something like that passed.
And, and look, I'm, I'm raising it just to make sure that we wanna be, not talking about it today, versus...
Sure.
Would it take us six months to talk the chamber into it?
So it, it really means, um, calling something if we were gonna do it next March.
Right.
Basically, is the decision we're making, just so we're all clear.
Yeah. Before we get, uh, move on to other things, I, I think we need to have a more robust, uh, discussion about potential reduction in services in the library. That issue's been brought up several times, and you touched upon it in your introductory remarks in, in general, but we haven't really, we haven't really focused on that, and I guess I need to know what the game plan is, because obviously, that's an important part of the, the decision that we make through the mayor, sorry.
No, I, I, I'm, I agree with you, and I wish I had, uh, directed, uh, city manager to comment on that specifically.
So this is one of those where I needed to know what the cut was gonna be, and we also have a discussion coming up afterwards about the potential use of Tweed Fund, so, um, it's difficult to present what the service levels could be at the library, not knowing what the funding level was gonna be. So it's something that, um, what I promised, um, you had a, um, longtime respected, um, library employee come and tell you that I went and I spoke to the staff, I promised to do this together, I think this is a team effort. Um, if I could just make a couple points of clarification, since we're talking about the library. Um, one speaker said there would be no programs, uh, that's absolutely not true. It's just what programming? And so this is an opportunity to take a look at our services, to take a look at our programming, to, to better understand, you know, what the community likes the best. My goal has always been, I've said since the beginning, my goal has been to keep the doors open. Um, someone also indicated that, that the director position was slashed behind your backs. Um, currently in the budget, um, I don't know where the three hundred thousand dollars is gonna come from, but the library board recommended that that position not be removed. They feel that a full-time director is, um, required for the library. I don't know that or not. Um, I, I said to the library board when I presented the halftime position, I didn't think a halftime person is right, but I was trying to keep the library doors open. And so I'd like to have that discussion collaboratively with the library board and with the Friends and Foundation and with the staff. Um, I've only appointed an interim because someone needs to, um, be there for the staff to help them through this, this period of transition. Um, right now, this is about public administration, it's about leadership, and it's about using our really, really talented staff at the library who know our community, who have been... been there, who understand which services are the best, and, and identifying which the ones those are gonna be. So to me, this is a huge team effort. You know, there's been talk of, of what a short timeline this is. It's incredibly short. When we look at, when you ask me to look around the edges, there are a few things we didn't get a chance to look into, and I didn't feel comfortable presenting, because the timeline is so incredibly short. I don't know when I can come back with it, with a service plan, because I'd like to work, I don't want to bring something that I haven't talked to the library board and, and the Friends and Foundation about. So if, if I bring you something back on the 23rd of June, it would be something I designed, quite ignorantly basically, for library services. And so what I'm asking is, tell me how much I can spend on the library, and let me work with the community to figure out what meets their needs within that budget, and, and deliver still really great services and a really great library that we all cherish. So I don't, I don't have the answers to your questions tonight, but I can, can commit to you that a collaborative effort will happen to do that. I also wanted to mention, and I neglected to do that, how open the recreation department was to the collaboration, and I still think that there's some really great opportunities there, and I'd like to continue to do that, even just without the teen center closing. The more we work together as a group, the, the more that we interact, I, I think it just enhances our programming. So that, that communication is still gonna continue, because I think we're excited about it, and I think there's real opportunities. So I would ask basically for your patience. I don't know if that's me. I would ask for your patience as we go through this. Let me know what, what the right funding level is for you and, and the community, and I will come back with a service plan.
So does that, bring us to the point where at this point you have adequate direction. All right.
Very much. Thank you very, very much.
All right, that takes us then to Agenda Item Number 11. And let's take a five-minute break here. Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, very good. Please take your seats. Councilmember Cole, are you still with us? Is Councilmember Cole with us?
Sharon.
Oh, she got back from her break.
Getting, getting late in East Coast.
I'm here.
All right. This takes us to Item 11, and its consideration of proposed approval of resolution establishing governing framework for the administration of the Tweed Trust Funds for the San Antonio Public Library and rescinding City Council Resolution 2006-102. You're up again, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you very much. We're supposed to pause for a moment. I promised I would babble while the slideshow goes on. So this actually is a very, very last-minute item. It came about, as a result of the discussions with the, the library board and Friends and Foundation relating to the $300,000 recommended reduction in the library budget, we started talking about the use of trust funds. And so at the, so what I'm gonna do, it's, I, I, one, I have to thank our new grants manager, Tracy Prokosky, who spent two full days, well beyond an eight-hour day, two full days, trying to piece together years and years and years of history, reviewing many, many minutes, many, many council meetings, to try to sort of understand where we started and, and why we ended up where we are today. So I'm very grateful for that assistance. I'm gonna try to walk you through the history. I'm gonna try to do it briefly. We put a tremendous amount of information into the staff report, so if you have questions, please stop me if I'm not being clear. We tried very hard to, to piece all this together, so that it would be understandable for the council and for staff and the community. So what I'm gonna go over is the summary of the history, the proposed resolution establishing a governing framework for specifically the Tweed Trust, which is a trust that, that we're talking about, and the, the trust that the library director and the library board had recommended would be used to backfill some of the reductions and fund some of the services and programs and operations in, in the library budget. And I'll explain that a little bit more. The library board of trustees met again yesterday. They have a recommendation that they would like me to share with the council as well, and I'm gonna do that. And then I follow it up with the recommendation from the staff report. All right, so back in 1998, the Board of Trustees of the George, George J. Wood and at least M. Wood Library adopted the Library Board Resolution 98-1. And this was basically, oh, hold on, I need my notes. I have way too many pieces of paper. Okay, so this was establishing the Wood Trust, and within that resolution was basically a distribution statement that said it would, there would be a construction account in this endowment fund that would be 20 percent, and an enhancement account containing 80 percent of the initial principal and interest. And that's important, and I'll, I'll share why later. Then, in, oops, hold on. So in 19, later in 1998, the council adopted their own resolution to affirm this Board of, of Library Board's resolution, which basically took that resolution and then supported that. And so the Wood Trust was established, and though, that framework of distribution was established. Into, in 2000, Ms. Tweed graciously included the public library in her revocable trust. And then in 2004, there was a First Amendment to that trust, and the first funds were believed to have been received by the city, but the accounting is a little bit difficult. We've talked about this story before. And, and the Wood Trust and the, and the Tweed Trust were put into the same fund, and so it's difficult, we're still trying to figure out when Tweed money was spent and put in, and when Wood money was spent, but we're working on that. But we believe in 2004, we know this amendment occurred, and we believe that some initial funds were received. And so it happened in 2006, 2005 to '06, the Tweed Trust also dedicated property to the city. The property is shared with Pacific Union College, and as a result of the funds coming, the, the trust funds coming in from the Tweed Trust and the property, the library board began discussions about how should we properly manage and expend these funds. This is such a tremendous gift, and when anyone leaves any, and donates any amount of money to, to any nonprofit or an organization like our library, it, it's so important that we're thoughtful about how it's spent, and it's spent in the way that the trustee has, has asked for it to be spent. And so the library board spent, spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out what parameters should be used in, in being able to put a framework for spending these funds. And so on July 12th, 2006, the library board passed a resolution, and that resolution basically decided that the trust funds should be distributed in the same manner as the Wood Endowment Funds. And that means it goes back to the, the 20 percent of the, of the principal and interest in a construction account, and the 80 percent in an, an endowment account. And so on July 26th, 2006, that same resolution went to council for adoption. Now, keep in mind, and something that's really important for the council and the community to understand, is aside from Ms. Tweed's desire that this, that these funds be spent on enhancing the library, there are no restrictions. So this is a self-imposed restriction recommended by the library board and approved by the council. So I want to be sure that the council really understands that, that, that there are no, that there's no, there's no distribution restriction by the trust. And so time passed, and, and again, the, the funds are commingled. We're trying to understand what Tweed funds were spent between 2006 and 2011. We're working on that. But basically in 2011, the, the city and the library determined that it was time to replace the, the HVAC system, the, the air conditioning system at the library. And, and quite frankly, the city didn't have the money, and so the library board felt that this was incredibly important. I, I, I understand that, and, and certainly am appreciative that, that we were able to find the funds to be able to do this, because not only is a hot library unpleasant, you damage your, your collection, which is, we're, we're the keepers of a very precious collection. And so we have an obligation to make sure our building is, is properly maintained as well. And so in, in, on April 20th, 2011, staff brought forward a staff report that was specifically for the architect for the HVAC system. And as part of that discussion, it was recommended that the council approve using Tweed funds to help pay for that project. It's a very expensive project. And so a discussion ensued, and by a voice vote, the council made a recommendation to re, to rescind the, the resolution that was passed on July 25th, 2006, which was Resolution Number 2006-102, so that it could spend the Tweed money as, to, to basically be able to do the, the air conditioning project. Behind didn't mine. That's the distribution form. So we're, we're on, we're, we're at this meeting, so what, what happens in this staff report is, the, the rescission of the resolution is not agendized, and so it's not a legal rescission, because per the Brown Act, it wasn't properly noticed, and, and it occurred without the community's knowledge. On top of that, council gave, or the, the staff gave the council the wrong resolution number, and it actually rescinded a resolution that was protecting the property that Mrs. Tweed had donated, graciously donated to the city, which is important to keep in place and protect. So they rescinded that resolution instead of the resolution they intended to rescind. I know, you can't make this stuff up. So, so they rescinded the wrong resolution, but the whole rescission really wasn't effective because it wasn't properly agendized. And so as we went into the budget preparations for 2015 of '16, the, the library director requested of the library board that Tweed funds be utilized to support the operations of the library at the amount of $181,000. So that, that revenue was in the budget, in the draft proposed budget that we presented to council on May 11th. That revenue was already considered in the $1.4 million budget that the library was presenting. When I came forward and we, we determined we needed to cut a million dollars, and I asked for $300,000 out of the, the library, the library director made some cuts to the library, but went back to the library board and requested that an additional $100,000 be withdrawn from the Tweed Trust, totaling $281,000. And that was approved by the library board. At the end of that meeting, just before adjournment, I inquired whether that was appropriate, proper, what the framework was, because I'm not familiar with it and not knowledgeable about it. And there seemed to be consensus that they, people thought so, but weren't 100% sure, but it seemed to be that, that the Tweed funds were there to, to be able to utilize for such a purpose. I went ahead and asked staff to look into it, and that's where we did days and days of, of research, trying to find everything, bring everything together. And I asked to basically have the authority and the framework researched, so we were sure, because in my opinion, one of our most critical jobs that we do as staff to council is we present you with accurate and thoughtful information so you can make informed decisions. That's very important to me. And so this is where we learned of all of this history. And so we learned that Resolution 2006-02, 102 was not rescinded, that, that 2006-47 was rescinded, and, and that we needed to look at how we were gonna, what framework we wanted to use to be able to spend the Tweed funds. And so my recommendation that I brought to the library board yesterday and the Friends and Foundation was that I think that we should properly rescind 2006-102, because one of the challenges we had when we were doing research was, there's some understanding that we did and we didn't, and, and it wasn't done properly, and so we want to make sure that rescission is proper, and so I'm asking you to do that tonight. I took the framework of what was adopted and so thoughtfully considered by the library board and the council in 2006, and that's this framework, and that is following the Wood Endowment, which says 20 percent of principal and interest goes to construction account, and 80 percent goes to enhancements. And the key to the distribution is that 40, that 4 percent of the fair market value of all the assets can be distributed annually to enhance and enrich the library services. That comes from the Wood Endowment, and that's what the library board recommended and passed in their resolution, and that's what the council passed in their resolution in 2006. And so in my opinion, respecting history and respecting the fact that we want to be financially prudent, and we want to be thoughtful about how we spend the, the funds or the monies that people so graciously donate to, to the library, I'm recommending that you adopt a new resolution that follows that same guideline that was put in place in 2006. I'm also recommending that we will bring back, we didn't have the time, on June 23rd. We certainly don't want there to be any question about the property, and I'm requesting or recommending that on June 23rd, we bring back a cleanup resolution to make sure that it's very clear that, that Resolution 2006-47 will bring you a new one that, that puts that, if it was, if there is a sense it was rescinded, it wasn't rescinded, so that, that , that property is protected for uses for the library only. I think I've confused myself now. So yesterday, we met with the library board and the Friends and Foundation, and, and as many of the speakers said, they graciously spent two hours with us, trying to understand this information, trying to understand the history. No one brought up anything different than what we were able to find, so I'm really proud of the staff that we were able to, to pull all this together and, and I think present accurate information. They do have a different recommendation that they would like to recommend to the council, and that is, the library board recommends a one-time drawdown from the Tweed Trust Fund in the amount of $281,000, including use of principal if necessary, and will work diligently to create a sustainable financial plan for the future. The total amount currently in the Tweed Trust Fund is $731,000, so this is in the area of a little over 40 percent of, of that. So it would be using one-time money for, in ongoing expenses. I'm going to re-present what, what my recommendation is, and I think that is, I'm recommending that the council rescind the Resolution 2006-102, that through the resolution that you've been provided, that you establish governing framework for the administration of the Tweed Trust Fund that follows the Wood Endowment framework, that continues with the 4 percent of principal and interest for the enhancement enrichment of the library. I did add, because I was trying to offer the library board and the council some flexibility, a statement about if the library board and the city council agreed that additional funds could be withdrawn for interior enhancements of the library, because there's no future funds right now for any kind of expansion, any kind of improvements to the library, and we want to be sure that we keep the, the internal aesthetics of, of our gem at, at the quality that the community wants it to be at. And so I was trying to offer an additional, some additional discretion for the council and the library board to make sure that we can keep investing in our gem, and that we don't come short of, that when we really need to do some enhancements, there isn't money available. In my mind, this is not about maintenance, that's not what I'm asking for. I think the city should maintain the building, that's our responsibility. This is about enhancements and enriching the experience in the library to be able to do internal enhancements. And that's the resolution that you have before me. I'm happy to answer questions if we're able. I appreciate your patience. This was a tremendous amount of information to go through, and, and I will try to answer any questions if, if there's anything I can, I can provide.
Are there any initial questions of staff?
I have a, a question with respect to the recommendation. It, it seems a little inconsistent to me, and I want clarification in terms of what exactly you're recommending. On the one hand, you, you think we should operate in accordance with Resolution 2006-102, but yet you're, you're also recommending that we formally rescind it. Is there some missing piece there? Do we need to re-adopt it with, with the minor tweaks that you talked about?
Again, the minor tweaks are only the opportunity to add some discretion for council. It's to clear up the confusion and I had a conversation with the city attorney briefly, it was brief, trying to save money, to make sure that my perception and the city clerk's perception that it could easily be misunderstood what the council's action was and the fact that it was the wrong resolution number, it wasn't agendized. What we're saying is, to be very, very clear, we should rescind, because that was the verbal intention and the verbal vote was to rescind that resolution. And so, we're recommending that you take the formal action to rescind it as was intended at that meeting in 2011, adopt a new resolution that is basically identical to the one that was put in place so thoughtfully in 2006 by both the library board and the city council at the time, but only add, and that's, I was just trying to again, offer some additional opportunity to be able to keep the enhancements moving for the library. It's certainly at the council's discretion to remove that or to add some other language.
And that raises the question in my mind, it's I guess just a very practical question, where are physically the assets of the wood endowment and who controls that?
They're with the Friends and Foundation and they're controlled 100% by Friends and Foundation.
Okay. So, under the scenario that you suggest, the Tweed funds would be incorporated into that?
No, they remain with the city.
They would remain with the city?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But treat it under a like framework.
Exactly.
Can you expand just a little bit, just to reiterate what construction actually means, what enhancements actually mean and sort of what's a range of things that fall into that? And also, you know, the 4% of fair market value of the assets, which is specifically on the wood and could include the Tweed, right? Distributed annually to enhance and enrich library services, sort of what that specifically means as well?
I don't feel comfortable talking about the construction because that's not the part that we looked at. I mean, I can make an educated guess that there's a portion, 20%, that went to construction. So, whether that's for an addition, that's for a new library, I didn't research that aspect of it. So, I would be uncomfortable specifically answering that. The 80%, the statement is for enrichment and enhancement and enrichment of programming services. And I think that for those of us who work on grants, for those of us who look at the definition of those words, it's not supplanting. And that's always what people worry about is when they give money, that the cities then say, cities, not just St. Helena, say, "Oh, we have money for that now, we don't have to fund that." And that's not what many individuals, and that seemed to be reconfirmed with Mrs. Tweed, that that was not her intention, that it was really for expansion, enhancement, enrichment of the library. And so, to me, that's what that 80% is intended to be. The challenge that we're having with the distribution formula is, even though it was approved by the library board and the council, it appears it's never been used. And so, we don't know the value of the property, it hasn't been assessed and so, I can't tell you, we haven't had the opportunity yet, I can't tell you what that number should be. And that was very, very understandably frustrating for the library board and the Friends and Foundation yesterday, but we just didn't have adequate time to be able to figure out. I don't want to throw a number in the air because I'm not an appraiser, I don't know what this property would be worth. And so, that's another thing that we have to work on is, what would that amount be?
That was my second question is, in that, you know, when did that kick in? What potentially accumulated that hasn't been allocated towards the enhancement and the enrichment, or has, maybe it has, I don't know. But it'd be good to understand all of that. And that's a combination of both cash and property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any further initial questions of staff?
Would it be fair to state that there, on the first page of the staff report, it says the endowment states that beginning in 1991, 4% of the net market value of the assets shall be distributed. Isn't that supposed to be 1999?
Could.
Because we're right above that, we're talking about 1998 and so, it would be the year after, right? I think I saw somewhere in the staff report.
If it's incorrect, I apologize.
It's a completely separate issue, but I really would like to know whether we've been taking the 4% and what that value is and whether there's more monies that need to be taken just to adjust that. I understand it's a separate issue.
I think that might be a typo, I think you might be right. It seems like it should be 1999, but I couldn't, I can't tell you from, staff's gonna try to look. You're correct, it's 1998, a typo on my part, I apologize.
So, I guess we're talking about $100,000 difference. There's $181,000 that's already been included in this budget and there's another $100,000 that this board is recommending that we use. And I guess I don't know, it's 100, am I right there so far? What is the staff's reasoning not to support that? Is it merely a legal, technical reason? Or is it more of a, you know, we need to keep those monies in sort of a sustainable account?
I think it's twofold. One is respective history and the thoughtfulness that was put in to how the funds should be distributed and the fiscal sustainability of trust funds like that, so that they're there in many, many years, you know, moving forward to support the library and that fiscal stability is the council goal. And that's what you've asked me to do. And spending one-time funds on ongoing expenses is not a fiscally responsible strategy. And so, based on those things, that's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to talk at public hearing on this?
Jay Green, 1516 Oak Avenue. It seems to this listener, you certainly have to rescind the unnoticed, non-noticed provision. And what you intend to do in terms of whatever is prudent or using the wood foundation as a model, that's probably a good idea in terms of allocating. Although, we should remember, Mrs. Tweed apparently made no restrictions on the use of the funds. And instead of a 4% cap, it seems to me that you could simply set a cap of the income in any year from the investment of the funds and make that the cap. But most importantly for our discussion, which we were just having about the library, I urge you to consider a one-time loan of $100,000 from the Tweed trust. I understand the concerns that you might have in terms of what is fiscally prudent or what is overall prudent. That's a fine principle, it's an abstraction and we are faced right now with some very severe consequences if the full $300,000 is cut from the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Any further comment?
Norma Feliz again. I want to urge you to yes, rescind that resolution and then adopt a new one. Just based on yesterday's meeting, there are two points. I think I understood that there was still a little hesitation of the interpretation of some of the percentages and how to use those percentages. And apparently, there were not all the original documents and all that. So, I would suggest, thinking about that part, you know, yes, like yes, do with a good, but not establishing exactly how it is, because apparently, there was still some confusion about that. And the other point that I would like to make is that, even though I'm not a trustee anymore, I was, I think the trustees, and I don't know if it's legally possible, I think that trustees made that recommendation with the assumptions that were being managed yesterday, that it was a recommendation to promote, to provide an alternative of different cuts of expenses that was not including the layoff of Jennifer Baker. So, now with that includes that we know it's a big ticket, I don't know, and they're not here, I don't, I just want to express that I don't know if that was, if that recommendation is still base, since that situation has changed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I want to make clear what Leslie Stanton, what Norma was saying, that additional $100,000 that the library board did agree to was offered before Jennifer Baker's was fired. So, I don't think they're offering it, they're not going to approve it now.
Okay.
So, it's not really $281,000 right now.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton.
Thank you.
Lowell Smith with the Friends and Foundation. I'm glad to hear the mention that the library's responsibility is the maintenance of the building. Did I hear that carefully?
Please, please.
I'm sorry, the city's responsibility is the ongoing physical maintenance of the building. Now, that's being said, and you can see through the history of how councils have perceived the desires of the Tweed, of the Tweed funds, which basically were not very well categorized, or specifically categorized. And at different times, when the city council said, "We don't have the money for the HVAC to protect that very valuable set of books," the friends interpreted and say, "Let's use this capital from the Tweeds to do what the city said they were gonna do, but now they said they don't have the money." So, that's always the other side of the interpretation. If the city says, "We don't have the money to do the things we said we were gonna do" and the friends then say, "Here's access to some money, we think it's very important to do that," and they do it, and then it's misinterpreted, I think, as you're spending this money rather than keeping it as an ongoing endowment. So, that's the crosshairs of where we've been over the last few years as far as spending one-time or specifically the Tweed funds for maintenance kinds of expenses. I would love the concept of saying, "Yes, the city will always maintain it at a certain level." We at one-time wanted the city to have a maintenance agreement to maintain their level of commitment, so the wood funds, and I can talk only about the wood funds now, would be used primarily just for enhancement and endowment. But that understanding of the city's ability to maintain anything was never agreed on by the city. So, you know, we're back in the old crosshairs of saying, "How are we going to maintain, supplant, enhance, all of those words, this wonderful facility with this wonderful collection?" And we've scrambled to do that. The foundation and particularly the friends and the trustees have done that in the past because the city says, "We don't have money." So, I think, I guess the point I'm trying to make more than anything else is, thank goodness for the flexibility of the original Tweed funds. Thank goodness, thank goodness that they were relatively unprecise. The councils in the past and as we're doing now are trying more and more and more and more to make them more and more precise. And I think the challenge is, life is not as that precise and we've demonstrated that as far as maintenance of the library is concerned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? All right, council discussion. Maybe, do you have further comment?
There were a couple of points, if you wouldn't mind, that I could clarify. There was discussion about the 4% distribution. I did speak to the city attorney as I was asked to do. He agrees with my interpretation of the 4%, that there's no additional discretion provided for in the wood endowment and then it's 4% of net market, net fair market value of the assets, which includes the funds and the land. And so, to me, that is, that's been clarified, at least from our standpoint. I also want to clarify that I don't know if the original $180,000 qualifies under the distribution formula. So, again, I want to be sure the council understands that even though the $181,000 was requested and was included in the budget that was presented to you on May 11th, because I don't know what that distribution formula is gonna look like, I don't know how much is the appropriate amount to draw from the Tweed funds. So, I don't want you to make the assumption that the 180 is good to go and it's the only $100,000 that you're looking at. And then, the maintenance of the building, and I mean this in honest sincerity, we have 65,000 square feet of buildings that we maintain, is that right, 65,000? And although it's our gem and we love it, it'll be maintained as best as we can as we do all the other buildings. And you can see we struggle with City Hall, you can see we struggle with the police department. Carnegie is another gem that we've worked very hard to try to keep up. The Marr family contributed a tremendous amount of money to get the teen center up to a place that it's a really cool place to be. And so, we struggle with the overall maintenance of our facilities. So, when I say that it's our responsibility, I'm not saying there's always gonna be money there to do it, because that's one of the funds. We have no sinking fund, we have no replacement funds for the maintenance of all of our buildings. So, I just want to be really clear about that. So, those were three points I just wanted to make sure council understood.
So, on the distributions, you know, the 4% of fair market value annually, of that 4%, 20% gets set aside for construction, not maintenance, but maybe it's major repairs, maybe it does cover HVAC, whatever. And then, 80% goes into enhancements, is that right?
No, it only applies to the enhancement account. So, the distribution is for the enhancement account. The construction account, subject to approval and confirmation by the city council, the board shall have complete discretion to determine if and when income and principal shall be distributed from the construction account, and I don't know where that's set up, and the amount of each distribution provided. And so, that's the construction account. The 4% is specifically to the enhancement account.
Okay, on an annual basis?
Correct.
Okay. So, there's some other formula that outlines how at least the wood funds and the Tweed funds, if they're under the same framework, could be used for that 20% construction component?
So, it says, creation of the endowment fund, the fund shall have two components, a construction account containing 20% of the original endowment, and that's how it was created, of the principal bequest, and an enhancement account containing 80% of the initial principal bequest and income derived therefrom. So, that's how the two funds were set up.
And there must be at some point, some contemplated distributions or access to the construction portion of the fund and maybe it's contingent upon some trigger in the future. I know there's been a campaign to raise additional money for expansion over time. I'm just gonna jump in. I mean, it seems to me like we're at, we are at a crossroads where there needs to be a concerted effort for the, the city doesn't always have the money to cover some of these things. There's this endowment sitting there and I feel like in the past, there, you know, there used to be three groups, now we're down to the city and the friends. And we don't have a lot of transparency with respect to what really goes on with the wood and the Tweed trusts. But it seems to me it's time for everyone to come together and figure out how we're gonna manage this library most effectively, not this year, but over 20 years. And I'm gonna defer to the experts, which are those that are on the foundation, the friends and the staff to come to us with, "Hey, here's a plan." And, you know, how we fund HVAC and forward expansion. I think this is all part of this five-year strategy or long-term strategy that's being done. And I don't know that we're gonna answer questions tonight. I think the question tonight is more about, you know, should we be making a one-time draw to cover operating expenses? But now, I'm hearing that maybe the $100,000 that was gonna be put towards the budget may not be there because of actions that were taken yesterday. So, I'm not sure what we're really opining on tonight with respect to trying to figure out how these funds are used. But the one thing I am taking away is that you can't continue to be city versus friends, it needs to be all of us in this together to figure out how to make this asset as best as it can be for this entire community. I don't know how we're gonna get there, but just one initial observation.
Please, we're in discussion. Please, we're in discussion. Public comment is over. Is there any further council comment?
I would just briefly comment that I've been through the history with great care, and it's clear to me that the estate, Mrs. Tweed took the position that the intent of Mrs. Tweed was the funds were to be used for enhancements to library services and not to replace city funding of library operations. And that, to me, is extremely consistent with what you would expect of a typical donor's intent. Yes, it wasn't in the trust document. Nevertheless, this was clearly communicated to the city by the attorney for the estate. And without going into all the details, I can see where she had tremendous leverage in this situation. So, and, and so I feel personally uncomfortable in taking the position that these funds should be used for general operations. I don't think it's consistent with the donor's intent. I don't think it's honoring the donor. And I think, based on trust principles, we have an obligation to honor the donor's intent as expressed by the attorney for the estate. And it's a hard, hard thing to say that because it does deprive us of flexibility. But on the other hand, to my way of thinking, it's the right thing to do, and we have an obligation to do the right thing. That's my view of it.
So would that take?
Well, that's why, I would support the city's resolution.
I would agree with that. Oh, sorry.
Yes, I totally agree with that. I think all the research and everything that's been done by staff and the history and getting to the truth, finally. I mean, here's the fruits of it, and I'm in favor of the resolution.
I agree with you. I'm troubled that the, at some point, by resolution, these Tweed funds were supposed to be incorporated into the Wood Trust. And that is, I think that's what the language says. Am I, am I correct? By the resolution in 2006?
The resolution in 2006 has language that says that. It is more complicated than that. It's complicated by a variety of factors, including the, I have a little bit of a different view of the 2011 action. My belief is that the legal effect of what happened in 2011 was that the rescission actually happened. But that, I agree with the city manager in creating, in the concept of creating an absolutely crystal-clear record in that regard. The second complicating factor is that, as the city knows, there was a settlement reached in the trust matter, which, to some extent, bears on the effect of these documents and the relationship there. So I guess that's a long-winded way of saying that, that I don't think that we should, we should leap to a conclusion that the 2006 resolution required the incorporation of the Tweed funds into the, into the Wood account.
Well, yeah, you're the city attorney. I have my own opinion. I think it should have been in there originally, and that was the end of the story. At that point, those funds should have been in the Wood Trust originally in that account and used under the Wood framework. And so it doesn't matter what I think now. I don't think it gets us anywhere. I tend to agree with the mayor that the donor's intent was clear that it should be used for enhancement purposes and not operational purposes. I don't see anything to the contrary there.
Mr. Pitts?
With respect to that part of the discussion, I'm in agreement.
All right, Ms. Kroll, are you there?
Chair.
Councilmember Kroll?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I am here.
All right, are you in agreement?
I'm here, but I am, I'm still awake.
Okay, are you in agreement with your colleagues?
I, I'm supportive of the city manager's recommendation.
All right. The chair at this point would request a motion to approve the resolution as presented by the city manager.
So moved.
Ms. Black, roll call.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. All right, that takes us to number 11. Is that right?
Yep.
No, 12.
12.
12. Oh, my goodness. Consider Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, fiscal years 2015, 2016 to 2019, 2020.
That's crazy. Sorry, just waiting for the PowerPoint to load up there on the screen.
And you need to point it here.
Do I need to click that? Oh, there it goes. So thank you, Mayor and Council. Steve Palmer, Public Works Director, just going to present the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. As introduction, this is a five-year planning document that really needs to be updated annually because it doesn't include funding or budgeting for all five years. The budget is only amended to include the first year funding. So it's important to remember that as we go through. It needs to be updated every year. The goal of the program is to maintain and improve the city infrastructure. And this plan I put together includes expenditures of $15.8 million over five years. The staff report actually shows 14.5. It is a typo. So, you know, the attachment that is the actual CIP document shows 15.8. So that's just a matter of correction. There's a typo. I divided the CIP into four categories, civic improvements, streets, wastewater, and water. This is a real basic schematic of how we go through the planning process. Staff identifies projects, then we go through some metrics to try and fund those projects by priority level. And as I said, we include them in a budget for this fiscal year. The other four years, the program are out years that are technically not funded until we adopt the annual budget. And then we go through project implementation. This is just a quick snapshot of the five-year CIP and where, how projects are funded. Oh, that's just, oh, this is the first fiscal year. This is fiscal year 15, 16. That's right. And then the next slide shows the five-year funding. The percentages don't change a whole lot through, over the course of the five years. The first division we have is the civic. And what I've done with this division and with all divisions is to try and utilize existing capital fund balance. So the way things have been budgeted here in the past through the CIP is money has been set aside in a capital fund balance that then was drawn down upon as projects were implemented. So given the current situation of revenues, we're just trying to spend down that fund balance and deliver projects with that money. And then we're not relying on any future revenues for the CIP right now. And I'll explain in more detail as we go through the slides. But, so what that means is, once this money is spent, there's not going to be any new funds programmed, no new projects. The priorities in the civic improvements were given to finish projects that already been started. So projects are already under construction. And that's really all this CIP does. It's pretty bare bones for the civic. We're just delivering, finishing out projects that are already under, under delivery. With the exception of one new project, which is the downtown restroom project, which funding is renewed from the downtown renostrance project under the streets program into this. And the civic projects are entirely funded by general fund. Just a quick snapshot list of the projects in the civic division. Again, the downtown restaurant project is the only new project. The other projects are under construction. And for the most part, I think, yeah, except for the restroom project, they're all repair-type projects. So there are maintenance projects, nothing, nothing, not building any new, any new buildings, not doing any major facility rehabilitation. Again, the pie chart just shows that for fiscal year 15, 16, and the five-year funding, civic projects are 100% general fund. Moving on to the streets division. Again, we're trying to utilize existing capital fund balance. So any new revenues we get from gas tax or general fund are going to go into, into the fund, and they're not going to be expended until we build up a, um, build up balances big enough to actually deliver a project. So the five-year CIP doesn't have any new funds until fiscal year 18, 19. So we're, we're drawing down the capital fund balance until the Measure T revenues kick in in 18, 19. I did want to point out that Measure T, in that same fiscal year, we will have to start spending some general fund money as a maintenance of effort requirement. So the measure does include this measure, maintenance of effort requirement. You've heard the term before in the presentation tonight about the library, about supplanting funds. So the same type of provision is, the sales tax measure is supposed to enhance street rehabilitation, it's not supposed to supplant existing expenditure. So the city has to continue to spend at the current level on street maintenance. And then the Measure T money is going to increase that level of maintenance we're able to prepare or provide. And that measure, that level maintenance of effort calculation has not been done yet. But based on the agreement, it's supposed to be on the fiscal year. It's like seven, eight, and nine, those three years it was based on. So whatever the city spent at a general fund in those years, once that measure kicks in, we'll have to spend it again. And priorities been given to pavement rehab projects here in the CIP. So that's the list. Again, it's, it's really just street maintenance. There's a few program-type projects, curb gutter sidewalk repair and ADA access ramps. And then the rest of the projects are grant-funded projects. So we've already committed to deliver. There is one project that is shown there as unfunded, and that's the one from the recent active transportation program grant. So I include it in here just as a, as a way to show that we've gone out after those funding. If we get the grant, they'll move to out of unfunded category, and it would be a welcome improvement to the community. So that pavement rehab money, this is, the next two slides show a list of projects that we're considering for in our two-year plan. And it kind of took a two-year horizon to look at. So it gives us some flexibilities we go through. We can pick a funding level we want to spend this year. We'll start at the top of the list of this, and we'll go through there until we run out of money, and then we'll push the next project the next year. And the plan right now would be to try and hit all those streets that are showing a slurry seal and micro-surfacing this year because they're pretty quick to develop plans and specifications for those type of projects. Doesn't require a lot of engineering. You can do all through spec work. But then the last two in the bottom there are the overlay projects, which are Charter Oak and Allison Avenue, which that would be next fiscal year because the timeline to deliver those plans and specifications is just too long. I did want to point out also that as part of the recent pavement management program update we did, those projects were advanced from reconstruction. So I kind of downgrade it from reconstruction to an overlay. And what happened is, after looking at those projects myself and then having my pavement consultant look at it, we both feel those roads are not reconstructs. An overlay would be sufficient. What we're seeing out there is that the structural condition of those roadways are sound. We don't see major base repair areas or base failure areas. We're just seeing the wearing course, the surface course you ride on is cracking and ravelling and coming apart. So we feel like we can grind and overlay those, and it's more efficient use of money than reconstructing. So here's the streets funding, and you can see fiscal year 15, 16, we're spending down gas tax primarily, and then the grants. And the gas tax is all existing fund balance. We're not using any new money. We do get about $125,000 a year or so from gas tax. And then the five-year, you'll see there's the Measure T kicking in as 38%. And you'll also see the general fund slice go from zero in this fiscal year to 8%. And again, that's because of that maintenance of effort requirement that's associated with Measure T. So we will have to, based on the current calculations and the way the agreement is written, we'll have to kick in some money from general fund to street maintenance at that time. Okay, moving on to wastewater. Utilizing existing capital fund balance again. And the priorities here on the project list is maintaining regulatory compliance and maintenance of the wastewater facility. And so that's, that's what we started with, and that's really, when you look at the project list, that's what we're going to get, is projects at the wastewater facility just to upgrade the facility and comply with regulatory requirements. I stole the slide from the city manager's presentation on the budget. And I just wanted to illustrate, this is the wastewater net position, and we are not using any of this money for capital projects in the five-year CIP. So at the end of fiscal year 15, 16, you'll have $656,000 still in the wastewater enterprise account. And we're not using any of this money this year, or in the five-year at all, for wastewater capital projects. We're spending down the existing fund balance. Here's the project list for wastewater. The list was assembled based on the prior CIP and a limited wastewater facilities evaluation that we did recently as part of our permit renewal process with the regional board. So it's not really comprehensive, and we're still going through the permit renewal process. And there may be more improvements we'll have to add to this list, but this is the best that we know at this time. So we will need to evaluate the current rate structure to see if we can support all these improvements. A lot of them are still unfunded, or estimated costs could be more than what we can afford through the current rate structure. And so it'll be important to go through that exercise. And you can see, this slide illustrates that case once again, that utilities should say rates. I neglected to change that. But so the rates are paying for 90% of the funding of the capital improvement program. So it's critical that the rates cover the cost of the improvements. We have no other way to fund them unless we do a bond issuance of some kind. So moving on to water. Again, the program I put together attempted to use only existing capital fund balance. I ran into trouble with that, with the water fund. We have, I'm going to click the next one. So this, this shows the revenue less expenses, another slide I stole from the city manager, that the revenue less expenses is shortfall of 260. Noah got the bad chair tonight. This shows a... Is that in the budget? So the slide, the slide shows that, at least this year, we're operating a deficit of $266,000. So what happens with that, when I run that out, is that in year one, we can, we can do fine with the capital fund balance. In year two, we start to show some problems. And so in order to keep the program going and deliver the improvements we need for the system, we'll need to look at the rate structure again. And again, we prioritize strictly on complying with the regulations and keeping the distribution system maintenance up. So when you go to the list of projects we've included again, you'll see it's really, it's really maintaining existing infrastructure, replacing some aging equipment, replacing ancient, aging tanks. And the one, I did want to highlight the Dwyer Road booster station there. It is, that is not a city project. That's a city of Napa project. They're taking the lead on it. We are a joint partner with them in Calistoga to deliver that project. I've included a budget number for a cost sharing in there. But at this point, we do not have a cost sharing agreement with them. We agreed to share the preliminary engineering a third with everybody. And we're still negotiating what that means when we go to construction. So that project, the city of Napa, is pushing forward, and they've got it out to bid. But right now, we do not have a cost sharing agreement with them to finish delivery of that project. So I've put in there a budget number, and that, that could change subject to that final agreement. And then the total in there is the total cost, that $5.4 million is the total estimate project cost. That's not the city's share. Our share is yet to be determined. So this, the final slide there with the final total for water shows that there's an unfunded amount over $3 million. That, and these are, again, these are just projects we've identified at this point based on the previous CIP and some limited evaluations we've done. We really need to do the rate analysis to figure out what are the improvements that are, that need to be done, and flush out some of the cost estimates for the projects that are already in there. My fiscal year 15, 16 funding versus the five-year funding. I'm trying to, is there anything important there to point out that changes? The unfunded amount there that's 18% is the, that's the Upper York Creek restoration project, where we're still short $1.7 million. And we're actively seeking grant funds to close that gap. So that's it for my presentation. Next steps would be the Planning Commission Next steps would be, the planning commission has to make a finding that this CIP is consistent with the general plan. So we'll go back to the planning commission in next meeting to make them, have them make that consistency finding. And then we'll bring this back in a final version for council adoption at the following meeting under consent. Any questions?
Any initial questions?
I, I do. On the, on the water net position slide, can you bring that back up? Sorry, Cindy. While we're waiting for that, what, what I wanted to do was just to sort of walk through the math here and how the columns relate to each other. And, you know, just go through sort of what it all means.
Sure. I may lean on the city manager, help me out with that one.
I'd be happy to walk you through it.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand it.
Yep, absolutely. So do you just want me to walk you through the columns?
Yeah.
Okay, so the top, the, the water unrestricted net position, and, and the net position is an accounting term just for everybody. I don't know why they have to do this, but enterprise funds are, have different terminology than the general fund. And so when you look at the general fund slide that I have in my earlier presentation, it says fund balance. For enterprise funds, it's the net position of the enterprise fund because it's a business. And the whole intention behind enterprise funds, such as water, wastewater, transportation agencies, airports, th- those are intended to be self-sufficient, self-sustaining businesses in government. And so at the end of fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, per the CAFR, the cities, the water enterprise fund's net position was the six point one million. And so what we're showing you in the next line is funds that have been expended this fiscal year. We anticipate the unrestricted net position for, and, and it's unrestricted, that's the terminology, for the water fund to be the four point six, nearly four point seven million. We anticipate, anticipate taking in revenues of four point six million with expenditures of about four point eight million, thereby bringing in less revenue than we're spending for what we're proposing is this fiscal year is, is spending twenty, two hundred and sixty-six thousand more than we bring in through the, the rates, for the water rates. And, and that means we have to use cash to be able to cover that. And so the estimated net position then at the end of this coming fiscal year fifteen, sixteen is anticipa- anticipated to be the four point four million. What Steve's talking about with his capital projects that he just presented, those are, um, um, restricted funds that are already placed in those capital projects funds. That's the three million. And then you have the, the one point three million that is in unrestricted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and so just, just to be clear though, the, the delta between the first line and the second line, the six point one and the four point seven roughly, that's what was spent on projects in the last year. Not on, the operating expenses are down underneath the expenses, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's, that's the change in the net position. So we would have spent that on, that's correct, because we're bringing in very close in rates to what we're spending in the water system. So that's funds that would have been expended through, to our, um, our projects.
And that could partially reflect a shortfall, just like this two sixty-six in operational-
It could. Trying to remember the final numbers, but I don't recall. Oh, that's right, we did. That's correct. We overestimated, not we, the, the water revenues were overestimated last year. So I, I believe that we will be drawing from, um, from cash to, to balance for fifteen, for fourteen, fifteen, if I recall correctly.
Okay, and, and so, I mean, the, the reason I wanted to go through this to understand it was I see a, a big red number here.
Yep.
And so that, that really has to do with a rate study.
Yes, it does, absolutely.
And the importance of a rate study, because right now, our revenues aren't covering our expenses.
That's correct. And as, as Public Works Director Palmer pointed out, we, we don't know if we have all the capital projects that, that need to be funded and, and need to be done in the water system. Both of our systems, our water system and our wastewater system are critically important. It's health and safety. They're old systems, and they have to be properly maintained and kept up. And so that's another thing that he's been doing, is, is looking at both systems so we can incorporate those projects, if there are additional projects into the rate study. We could also incorporate a bond issuance, and we would incorporate the payment of the principal and interest in a bond issuance as well. That can all go into the rate study so that we can present, um, uh, recommended rates for the council in the fall or the spring.
But so the three million of restricted funds for water capital projects, is that then in, is that part of the five point one million for the fifteen, sixteen budget? That's shown in the next slide?
It's part of the five-year-
Budget. Part of the five-year budget.
It's part of the five-year.
Okay, okay.
So do we have a, a rate study going on right now?
It's in the budget for this coming fiscal year.
Okay.
Hasn't been started.
And then when would we expect to see the results from that?
Finance Director Mitz is already working on the RFP, um, once the budget's approved. And the, and as I mentioned, it's already in the budget. We could issue the RFP immediately in July, have someone hopefully on board in the fall. And so we could either bring it in, in early winter with a possible implementation, although timing-wise, I think it would be tight for us to implement new rates, if that's what the council chose to do by January two thousand and sixteen. I think we'd be closer to the latter part of fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, or even July one of sixteen would probably be more, more reasonable.
Last time, we implemented them on July one, as we all remember. That was the fifty-eight percent rate increase on the water side.
Thank you for that.
Now it's July one, two thousand and eleven.
And I guess for the, for the public's sake, you know, seeing the unrestricted net position go from six point one down to one point three, I mean, it might be alarming at first, but my recollection is that's because the council decided about a year and a half, two years ago, that we needed to fund a lot of projects and upgrades that had, hadn't been done in quite some time.
That's absolutely correct.
And then, and just one further comment on the revenue side. With water conservation and perhaps increased water conservation, that could also impact you on the revenue side to some extent. And that's very hard to predict at this point for anybody. Are there any further preliminary comments? Let me open it up for public comment, any public comment? Let me close public comment. I have one question which I should have asked, and that is that you seek direction, but what direction do you seek from us? Is it just to send it to the planning commission for the consistency determination?
That would be it, yep.
All right. Can I have a motion to-
Just, just one question on the, um, the streets. Has there been any consideration about the, um, the condition of the streets in the El Bonita neighborhood?
Yes, they were included in the pavement management program update we just did. And I'm looking at the list now to see. Yeah, I don't see any that's, that's fallen out, so they're not included in the first two years. So the, the software programming we go through to help prioritize projects and, you know, efficiently use the revenues and gas tax money to place those roadways farther down the priority list. So I can't tell you, I'm looking at this, I only have two years in front of me, so I can't say where they fall, but they are, the challenge of pavement maintenance is that you have these roads that, they look bad, and everyone knows that, you can see they're bad, and, and there's, there's cracking and ravelling. But they may not be the best place to spend the money. Once the pavement gets to a certain point, it's deteriorated past a certain point, you can't, you can't keep it anymore. And you have to, the program tells you, you need to wait till it falls apart basically and do a reconstruct. So unfortunately, some of the roads we can't maintain with the money we have are going to, are going to fall down towards that end. So you get past that point of, they get past that point of diminishing returns, and you have to let them go for a while.
I was just, uh, considering and thinking, and maybe I have the facts wrong, but there's going to be some sewer installation in conjunction with the Magnolia Oaks project out in that area. And you would think that, uh, those, those two would go together in some way, in some fashion.
You're absolutely correct. And I didn't include them in this, in this program two years, frankly, because I don't know when they're going to deliver that sewer project.
The other, just comment I would make is that we have to continue to dialogue with PG&E, you know, in terms of their, their, I understand that they're going to be doing some projects. Well, I, I know they have one already going on, on twenty-nine, but I understood from talking to Mr. Van Gorder today that they have some projects coming up in the, in the north part of the city. And I just want to make sure that the work that they're doing with underground piping is, um, in collaboration with our work so that we're not, uh, paving streets and then having to cut into them again. If we can avoid that, I know it's, sometimes it's difficult, but maintaining that dialogue on our ha- our behalf and then trying to get their schedule in place. Thank you.
I would make just one further observation. No one should think that Measure T is going to bail us out. Measure T, based upon, uh, the Public Works Director, will bring us about six hundred thousand dollars per year. The city manager was slightly more optimistic in her long-term financial forecast, but not sufficiently so, so that it's material. But I would like to read this one sentence in her long-term financial forecast, uh, which I believe comes from Mr. Palmer. An investment of two point five million annually would maintain the pavement management index at fifty-eight. And our pavement, uh, management index is, as I recall, the poorest in Napa County at the present time. And so it takes that amount of money just to stay even. And Measure T at six hundred thousand dollars still leaves us a million, two million dollars short. And that just underscores the need for new revenue to come into the city if we're not going to allow our, uh, streets to deteriorate further than they already are. Now, is there anything wrong with my logic here? Got the numbers right? All right.
I would say here, here.
You need, you need direction, but the direction is simply to, uh, have, is, is to have the planning commission look at this for consistency.
Do we need a motion on that?
I don't think we do. Is it general consensus?
Yeah.
All right, you have a, Ms. Crowell, you all set with that? She's still, still there?
Sharon.
Is there a heavy, heavy-
That's good enough.
Take that out.
That takes us, I think, to our last item. With all these papers, I've managed to bury my, uh, agenda here.
I'd, I'd like to take a moment while everyone's getting organized to thank Director Palmer. He put a lot of work into making a, a more transparent and I think friendly capital improvement plan. It also hasn't been updated for a couple of years, and so this is big progress. And, and he alone is the Public Works Department from an administrative standpoint. We have an, uh, an assistant up front who does a fantastic job working the front counter and, and handling permits and things. But, but this is really Steve. Jennifer Tool, the new conservation specialist helped, and of course Kathy Robinson, who'd worked on it for years. But just want to really acknowledge again that we just continue to, to strive to be able to show the community what we're doing, to be transparent and, and to provide information in an understandable way. So we hope that we continue to meet your expectations as we're doing that.
Let me just add to that, that I have publicly stated many times and underscored the importance of updating the capital improvement plan annually. And I think for the moment, this is very much on all of our minds. It's the only way we can track the capital side of our business. And, uh, obviously, we did not do that in the last two or three years, but we've done it now, and it's a huge boost to have it in front of us, even as depressing as it may be. So, did I say that? Okay. In any event, uh, that takes us to the last item, uh, which is, uh, item thirteen, direction to city manager regarding St. Louis School District Pool.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes. And, and so I brought before the council on May twenty-sixth. I had talked about the fact that the school district was approaching its year anniversary of, of having the, the beautiful new pool open, and that they were potentially going to look at some options and, and wanted to talk to the city about maybe having some sort of partnership or, or involvement again in, in the community in the pool. And, and I didn't want to initiate those discussions unless council supported that I did that. At the time, it was intended to be a longer term, you know, government, we love to plan, to plan, to plan, to then start to talk about something. And so the direction from council was, sure, go ahead and start talking to them, look at some options, analyze some options, bring us some choices back. Since then, the company that has managed the pool for the last year terminated their contract with the school district effective July thirteenth, which is smack in the middle of the summer months and very, very challenging and difficult for the school district. And so that's a, that's a new element that we didn't know about when I brought the item before you on May twenty-sixth, and you gave me the direction of taking the time to analyze and bringing options back. And so this staff report's a little bit different than I think I expected to bring to you, and I think that you were looking for from me. Recreation Director and I met with the school district. She and I, Heidi and I talked about options. We talked about what we think the best role and the best involvement for, um, the, the city is and for recreation. And, and no, we didn't go through multiple options and look at multiple scenarios because we want to be a good partner with the school and, and we want to be responsive. And so what, what Heidi and I are coming to you with tonight, we're very interested in partnering with the school. I did provide an updated staff report. I, I wrote this at the very last minute, and the superintendent and I are, are very adamant that this is a partnership. We want to do this together with the school. We're going to make decisions together. The school will still have involvement, and I think it's, it's a great sign of, of the relationship and the collaboration that the city and the school district now have, which hasn't been there in years past. And so my, my, the options that I'm bringing to you tonight are, are basically that the city work with the school district in a, in a partnership to take over management of the pool in its entirety. So we would be responsible for the pool, and there would be some type of an agreement that, whether, whether the school district had joint authority and decision-making, I don't know what that looks like, or we don't manage the pool. A hybrid solution, we do it for a summer, we do it for certain things, we do, we're just, we don't think that's efficient, and, and we just don't, that's an option we're just not prepared to bring forward to you. And so what, what Heidi and I both feel is that we can manage the pool. We, the, the city did it for thirty years. The school district's very interested in having us manage the pool. And so I would look for a direction from council that I can initiate those negotiations and bring back to council a, a contract that would have the city manage the pool again.
All right, any initial discussion? All right, let me see whether there's any public comment. There's no public comment. Let me comment briefly. I was opposed, I think vigorously, to any hybrid solution when this last came up. To me, if we're going to undertake to manage the pool, we have fiduciary responsibility for it. And, uh, yes, you can talk about partnership, but until that's defined, I really don't know what that means in terms of a swimming pool. Maybe there are policy decisions that obviously you would be collaborative with respect to. But when it comes to, uh, management, supervising the employees and so on, it seems to me that has to be the sole and complete responsibility of the city. And secondly, uh, uh, staff assures me that, or assures, assures the council that it has the staff capacity to do this. I looked back at that budget session and looked at, uh, Ms. Arias's wish list in terms of additional people. And I seem to recall she wished for at least one or two more people. And so before we move forward here, I really want to be confident that we have the staff capacity and also that any contract is going to give us a full recovery in terms of a, in terms of the percentage of a, of our fully loaded, highly expensive person, I hope, overseeing the pool. A little bit of jest there, but there should be absolutely no cost impact on the city. That's my view of it. Does anybody else have a different view?
No, ditto. I totally agree. I think, uh, I think that we have, I mean, we need to have total responsibility over the management of it. I think upkeep and all of that's the school district's responsibility. But I totally agree that, that this has got to be an agreement that we're paying nothing out, we're, they're covering our expenses, and, and we can move forward with that, so.
Ms. Crowell?
Sharon. Sharon.
I think we're down to floor understandably.
Sharon.
She's on the East Coast, and so it's very rare.
Are you there?
I'm here, sorry. Stayed here for a moment.
Do you have any comment, Sharon?
No.
At this point, uh-
I'll, I'll go, and you can go after me.
So I, I agree completely- So I agree completely with what you're both saying. You know, I wonder if, you know, is there some opportunity in this, in this role to actually create revenue out of this management? I don't know exactly what that looks like. Maybe there is a, I know that when people manage a homeowners' association, sometimes there's a fee for doing that. So maybe it's not just cost recovery, but maybe there's some fee for doing that, something to be explored. Or through programming, that where money is charged for that programming, and somehow that's, it's more than just recovering the time of the employee who manages all of that. And it wouldn't be an unfair request. I think any professional manager would look for that. And so why treat ourselves any differently than a professional manager of the pool? Number two, I think it'd be important to maybe also look at, you know, are there some shared costs? I guess we're not maintaining it. The school is maintaining it, right?
We, the, from our initial discussions, the pool, the school would maintain the structural part, but we would be responsible for contracting for the chemicals and the maintenance of the pool, the water. That falls under pool management. But, and things like custodial, we haven't figured out yet, so who cleans the locker rooms and things like that? But they own the pool, and they will maintain the pool facility. At least those were our initial discussions.
Yeah, and I can't remember who mentioned it to me, but I know there are some discussions about how the Calistoga Pool is being maintained, how programming is being run there. I don't know if there are operational efficiencies, but I think it's something we should explore if there is an opportunity while we're, while we're looking at this, not to further complicate it, but...
Or at least look at their model.
Or look at their model, and what's working and what's not working, right?
All right, do you have a sufficient direction?
I do. I hear that council is directing me to continue to work with the school district to come back with an agreement to manage the pool.
All right.
Great, thank you.
I think that concludes our meeting, and I want to thank the public that stayed through the entire meeting. This is our longest meeting since I've been mayor. It's been a, but it's been a very interesting and productive meeting, I think, and I want to thank staff, and I want to give a real shout out to the community that's watched, and thank their patience for sitting through what is extraordinarily difficult time. But it's also essential, if we're going to live through it, that we all understand our problems and come together and try and meet them fairly. Thank you very much.